This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. It's August 23rd, 2021. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted via remote means. It is being recorded and broadcast by AmerisMedi. Given that we have a quorum in the council present, I am calling the meeting of August 23rd, 2021 to order at 6:34. I'll call upon each councillor by name. At that time, please let me know that you can hear us and we can hear you. And then please mute again. Okay, Shalony Baumil.
Here.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Demont.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johanniki.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Present.
Andy Steinberg, we're still waiting for him to connect. And Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
Thank you. There's no chat room for the meeting. If anybody has technical difficulties, please let Athena and me know. And we will decide whether we need to pause the meeting accordingly to address those issues. Athena will be monitoring council connections throughout the meeting. I would also point out that Athena is, in addition to managing the technology tonight, she is also the minute taker. And I saw Andy briefly and then he disappeared again. Okay.
Oh, he's here. Can we just confirm that Andy can hear us quickly?
Yes, Andy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Great.
Sorry, I have the switch computers to make it work.
Thank you. Okay, we have a very few brief announcements about upcoming town council meetings in September and upcoming committee meetings. The most current or recent will be this Wednesday, the Community Resource Committee will meet at 2:00. And on Thursday, the Governance Organization Legislation Committee will meet on a 10:30. I'm sorry, CRC is on Tuesday. GOL is on Wednesday and TSO is on Thursday at 6:30. Thank you. There's no hearing, and so we're going to move to general public comment. And I'm going to ask those people who are present in the audience, which there are about nine people, to please raise your hand if you would like to make general public comment. Okay, thank you. This is our only public comment tonight. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes and based on the number who wish to speak. And the council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. So I'm going to start by calling on John Hornick. Please enter the room and state your name and where you live.
Am I in the room?
You are, and we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lynn. My name is John Hornick. I am a resident of Amerist and chair of the AmerisMedi Affordable Housing Trust. I come before you to express my appreciation for the work that the Community Resources Committee has done in drafting a town comprehensive housing policy. I am in agreement with the five goals that are articulated in the draft policy. I am also in agreement with the proposed approach for measuring goals and progress, particularly for those that are most specific. I urge you to adopt these as you give consideration. Among those that I consider very important are the following: Minimum of 250 new units for households earning less than 80% AMI over the next five years. Minimum of 850 units above 80% AMI. Reducing the percentage of renters who are cost burdened and severely cost burdened to a total of 50%. Reducing the percentage of owners who are cost burdened or severely cost burdened to a total of 20%. Reducing in number the homeless individuals served at Craig Stores. Reducing the number of health and safety violations identified by inspections. And in alignment with the AmerisClimate Action Goals and Planning, a 25% reduction in admissions from housing stock by 2025, 50% by 2030, and net zero admissions from housing stock by 2050. I think all of those are very important goals. I am sure that there are those who will shy away from making these specific commitments. I urge you not to do so. Doing this will entirely undermine the draft policy. I wanted to comment on two issues that I felt were not sufficiently addressed. First, the role of the university in driving the Ameris housing market. What we clearly need is a plan to add 3,000 to 5,000 new residential units on campus for students and their families. That is the key to both providing more options for students and unlocking the Ameris housing market for everyone else. The second issue is pathways to achieving the goals. As the draft policy acknowledges, these will be difficult to achieve. The inclusion of potential strategies is helpful. However, there should be more discussion of how we get from here to there, particularly noting which strategies the CRC would give priority to. Finally, I wanted to let people know that the Ameris Neighbors is hosting a forum on the future of housing in Ameris on Thursday, September 2nd at 4:00 p.m. via Zoom. You can find further information about this and the links either at the town website or by pre-registering on the Ameris Neighbors website. Both of those you should be able to find pretty easily. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, John. I want to note that I believe we have lost Steve Schreiber. Looks like he's now reconnecting. Thank you. Are there any other people who would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, I have a phone number of 141.
Please don't read the whole number.
Okay, thank you. Could you please identify yourself? Please unmute. You need to unmute.
You can press *6 to unmute.
There you go.
Hi, this is Tracy Zechian. I live in Precinct 4, District 3. And I'm a member of the District Advisory Council Committee, I mean Board, District Advisory Board. And our board, I wanted to just, I offered at our last District Advisory Board to just come briefly and update the council and the public on what we've been doing. The board started meeting weekly in early August. And we have our fourth meeting scheduled this week. We are still short to voting members on our committee. And we've been having some issues meeting quorum because of that, but we haven't had quorum so far. But it looks like it might be a challenge in September. Two of our three meetings so far, we've only just had enough people for quorum. So the committee is interested, we've been working on a press release to advertise the need for more members. And we also want to get the word out about our work. So in terms of the membership, my understanding is that with our two slots, that one can be filled by somebody from District 5, or one can be filled by somebody from District 4, or votes to be filled by somebody from District 4. And then also, so we've been working closely with a town GIS IT person who's been super helpful. The updated census figures were released by the Census Bureau last week. And the total for Ameris for 2020 census is just under 40,000 people, about 39,300. So since that updated data come out, the IT town staff, again, they've been amazing. They've uploaded interactive maps on our board's webpage, on the council, on the town website, showing the 2020 population by census block and also showing the changes from 2010 to 2020. And so currently, our board is reviewing data and going through the data. One thing we understand is that based on conversations our chair had had with the Secretary of State Office, that because we're under 40,000, we could potentially continue to have 10 precincts. There's a state requirement that no precinct be more than 4,000 people. But well, because we're so close to 40,000, even though it may be legally possible, the Secretary of State Office advised us to check with council on this. But we're also looking at other options such as having 12 precincts or maybe 15 precincts. And we encourage public attendance at our meetings and public comment is welcome. And the information is on our board website as well as in our packets. Thanks so much.
Tracy, before you leave, would you just confirm that your meetings are on Wednesdays at 5:00?
Our meetings are currently on Wednesdays at 5:00, but we're looking to change that in September.
Thank you for your comment. I'm sorry?
Based on people's schedules, one thing that's come up is that some of the members who were appointed to the board thought that most of our work would be done over the summer. And now that the school year is starting again, they have less availability.
Okay. Tracy, thank you for the update and thank you for that information.
I thank you.
Thanks. There was another hand up. Would that person like to speak? If so, please raise your hand again. Okay, then we're going to go on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. This is a long consent agenda because it includes a number of committee appointments. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect there would be no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed when I list the item or as soon as I get done with the initial motion. The request to remove an item does not require a second. The motion which is on your screen states the following: To move the following items in printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Suspension of Town Council Rules of Procedure for 8.4 for the following agenda items. Just a reminder, this means we can vote on these items tonight. 8A Participatory Budgeting Commission Recommendations and dissolution of the commission. 8C Audit Request for Proposal Review Committee Extension, and that's of the time or deadline. 8D Town Council and Council Meeting Committee Meeting Format in Person/Hybrid or Fully Remote. That's just to say we will vote tonight. 8E Approval of Audit Request for Proposal Review Committee Extension. That's the actual approval. 9A2 Approval of Appointment of Non-Ameris Resident to the Local Historic District. That requires a separate vote. 9A1-5 Approval of Following Town Manager Appointees. Reappointment to Board of Health, Register of Voters, Council on Aging Disability Access Advisory Committee, Personnel Board, Residents Advisory Committee, and Water Supply Protection Committee. And then Appointments to Local Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Jones Library Building Committee, and Energy and Climate Action Committee. And finally, Approval of the August 2nd, 2021 Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes. Just two seconds. And I'd like to know if there's any item people would like removed. Seeing none, consider that a motion. I'm looking for a second.
Second, DeAngelis.
Thank you, Pat. Any further discussion? Seeing none. I'm going to start with Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's an aye. Mandy Johanniki.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
And Shalony Baumil. Shalony? Would Shalony go? No, no. Shalony, are you there? Shalony?
Okay. She disconnected.
It looks that way. I'll come back and check with her, but at this point, the vote is 12 in favor, 1 absent. We have no resolutions or proclamations and we have no presentation or discussion. Our first action item this evening is with regard to the Participatory Budgeting Commission Recommendations and the dissolution of the committee. Shalony, we did vote the consent agenda, but you were not connected. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So let me just say that Meg Gage has joined us this evening. We should bring her in from the audience. Meg is Chair of the Participatory Budgeting Commission and a former member of the Charter Commission. If there are questions from the town council regarding the commission's report, which we heard earlier. Thank you. Mandy Jo, did you have your hand up? Okay. Both Meg and councillor Kathy Shane are prepared to answer those questions. Section 1011 of the Charter required that we create a participatory budgeting commission. We did that within the first six months of the council and appointed people to it. And the charge to them was to propose a measure to adopt participatory budgeting or other similar methods of resident participation in the budgeting process in Ameris. The commission then was supposed to report back to us on December 1st, 2020. However, because of COVID, we did give them an extension to June 1st, 2021. The council then is required to act by voting upon the proposed measures with or without amendments within 90 days of receipt. Therefore, our goal tonight is to determine if we are going to accept, amend, or reject by virtue of a no vote, that's how you would reject, the three recommendations of the Participatory Budgeting Commission. So I've asked Athena to put the recommendations up on the slide. They were also in the report that was presented to us earlier this summer. Those recommendations are A, B, and C above. And then below that, you'll see the actual motion. The first one starts by thanking the committee and then we go on to actually try to capture, if you will, the essence of the actual recommendation in each of the motions. We will take these separately. But meantime, I want to ask if there are questions at this time from the council.
Pat's hand up? No.
I'm sorry. Do I, I don't see any hands up. Okay, then I'm going to go on with the first motion. We already did suspend our rules of procedure, so we're going to go to acknowledge receipt of the Participatory Budgeting Commission Report of June 1st, 2021 to thank the members of the Participatory Budgeting Commission for their thoughtful and thorough work and to dissolve the commission. Is there a second?
Shane seconds.
Thank you. Are there any further discussions on this? Meg, you have a question?
Question, if we're dissolved, we need to meet again to approve our minutes of our final meeting? We can still do that or we don't exist?
Yeah. Thank you. Then we won't be able to dissolve you, but Alyssa, you had your hand up. You have a suggestion for that?
That's not correct. We have this conversation every time we dissolve a committee, which luckily isn't very often. And that is, they don't have to meet to approve their minutes. There's never been a requirement for minutes to be voted on by a committee. All they have to do is accept, the chair just accepts that those are the final minutes. And you can do that, or you can make our date certain after they have a meeting. But why on earth would we ask them to post a meeting, have a quorum, just to approve their final minutes? It makes no sense.
So Meg, I think what you want to do is look over your minutes and then file them. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Alyssa. Are there any other questions or comments? The motion's been made and seconded, and I'm going to start with Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's an aye. Mandy Johanniki.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
And it's unanimous.
Great.
Thank you. So the first of the recommendations was to build on existing budget processes to enhance resident participation. Let me pause here for a moment and say, I spent some time last week talking with Meg, Kathy, and at a different time with Alyssa, and then also with Mandy Jo, formulating these motions so that they captured the essence of what was in the short-term recommendations, particularly for this one, and the requirements of the charter. So I'm just going to go ahead and read the motion book for a second and then see if there's any discussion. Per Charter Section 1011 to direct the town manager to build on existing budget processes to enhance resident participation in existing funding programs, including Community Preservation Act, Resident Capital Proposals, Community Development Block Grant, and others as appropriate. Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Darcy.
I just have a question. Does this mean that we are giving up on the idea of having a separate participatory budgeting process?
Meg, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, we hope not. What we, the decision we made in light of COVID and the many different challenges to our budget was that rather than have a, make a proposal right now for even $100,000 for participatory budgeting would be a distraction. I think some of us are wondering maybe we should have gone forward with it, but we certainly hope. And one of our recommendations in the report was that the council will pick this up again sometime in the near future. In addition, at least two or three of us plan to explore informally relationships with the university political science department. There's a huge amount of private grant money available for this kind of thing, but it seemed, we decided to be kind of team players and focus on what were the priorities for the town, given the crisis that the town has been facing. Again, we might have tried, I'm not sure that was wise, but that's what we unanimously decided. Hopefully, we'll come back to it because it's such a cool idea and we need to find more meaningful ways for people to become involved in our processes where they can make a difference. Not just speak and make a comment, but actually participate in a way where their ideas become policy.
Kathy?
Kathy, you're muted.
Please unmute.
I urge, thank you for the question, and as Meg said, we had long conversations about this. I urge people to go back and read the report on what we found, what supported the successful programs that we found. In addition to it being not the right time to carve out a piece of the budget, almost all the efforts have a staff and substantial staff time devoted to making this work, both to enhance the participation, but also to support helping residents cost out a proposal to vote at the end. And so it's not, the idea on the surface is, seems like it could start right away, but there's a fair amount of effort and we think there are opportunities along the way. And, you know, I'll mention even with the ARPA money and some money we have coming up, where we're going to be going out to the community to ask for ideas and where the money should be allocated to enhance participation. So we didn't say, "Don't do it." We just said, "Don't do what's called formal participatory budget, but work on the programs we have now to make them work better."
Could I add another point?
Please.
On the Charter Commission, when we put this into the Charter Commission, back then, the Community Participation Officer, who was envisioned to be one person, was in part to staff this process. And clearly, now the three people sharing that position very creatively are completely busy and they're beyond, you know, up to here full. And so that capacity isn't here right now at the moment.
Okay. Shalony? Shalony, you need to unmute.
I'm sorry, I think my internet is a little unsteady. But anyways. So I think the idea of pursuing professors in your mass is great because we've been talking with professors in the computer science department and they're building some really creative technology that we are hoping to use and create a prototype, especially to engage people who are underrepresented. And I'm happy to ask them if they would be interested in pursuing something like this as well.
Thank you.
I'll let you know, yeah, and make the introduction if that's helpful.
We're not, we're not done with this.
Pat, did you have your hand up?
No, I did not. I'm sorry. I will use the hand button. I'm, I just hold my face a lot.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions at this time with regard to this particular recommendation? Which is about existing funding and/or possible other appropriations coming forward, such as were mentioned, the ARPA money and also then resident participation in the reparations funding as well. Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer's an aye. Mandy Johanniki.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Okay, that one is unanimous. The next one, because we have a choice because of the way it's written, which is per chapter, section 1011 to direct the town manager or refer to some committee? Question mark. To develop a town young working partnership on participatory budgeting as outlined in the Participatory Budgeting Commission Report of June 1st, 2021. I'm not looking for a second. I'm looking for some discussion before we finalize the motion. Alyssa?
This is clearly in TSO's wheelhouse, according to our charge.
Okay, so if it's referred, it would be to TSO. Okay, so if it's referred, it would be to TSO. And are there other comments? George Ryan?
Alyssa stole my line. I agree with her. This is, we are the Town Services and Outreach Committee, and I kind of like the idea that we should have some skin in the game, if this, if we're serious about this. So, I think referring it to TSO would be an appropriate step to take.
Are there other comments? Mandy Johanneke?
Yeah. Um, I don't know whether I can vote for this, whether it's a referral or directing of the town manager. There are a lot of things this town always says, "Well, we need UMass to do. We need UMass to do." Or, "We need to work with UMass on." And the more we put on that list, the less chance I feel there's anything actually going to come out of it, because there's too much to talk about. We still don't have a strategic partnership agreement with UMass, for example, and it's been, I think, two years now. I know, I can anticipate that the comprehensive housing policy discussion is going to be talking about what we need to do with UMass to get housing. You know, there's talk about other things that UMass needs to do, and I think we need to start prioritizing what we want to work with UMass on. And to me, this is not the priority.
Are there other comments? Darcy?
Yeah, um, I, I guess I just don't understand for what reason it would be referred to TSO. For TSO to recommend whether or not we do it, because we could just decide that now. And it seems like if we, if we decide we want to do it, then it would make more sense to just direct the town manager, right? And Meg sounded, sounded like she was already planning, had a plan to do something along those lines. I know Meg is not the town manager, but.
That's good.
But I'm, I guess I would lean toward just moving now to direct the town manager.
Uh, George Ryan?
My thinking was that this just gives it a home. So, Meg has mentioned that she and some of her colleagues that have been working on this are going to pursue some other initiatives. And yes, they could take it to the town manager, and that's one option. The other thought was that this would be where they would bring anything that they have developed, and that's where the conversation could begin with the town council. Um, so I guess that's my thinking, is that this, we're basically identifying a specific committee. It doesn't have to be TSO, but it seems like a natural, a council committee where any kind of future developments that, that emerge could be brought for council, for the committee to review, and then pass on to the council if they thought appropriate.
Alyssa?
I understand what Darcy's saying, I believe, but our TSO charge says, "Review and make recommendations to the town council on issues and measures regarding the relationship between the town and Amherst institutions of higher education," which to me, coupling with what George just said about having a home, is the conversation that Mandy Jo brought up, which is that what are our priorities in our relationship with the different institutions of higher education? And TSO is supposed to be the home, although it has literally never discussed this in any fashion, is supposed to be the home of those conversations when it comes to the council. Despite the wonderful work that Meg and Shalani are apparently both doing separately, neither one of them is authorized to speak for the town council or the town manager in making this happen. So, it's wonderful that they're building relationships, but we can't just say they're off doing it, so they should keep doing it. Like, that's not how it works. It needs to be either directly related to the town manager's action or a town council committee's action, as PBC has been to a close. And then Meg could come and talk to us at TSO and say, "This is how much more I want to do, and this is how much I need you guys to do." Or Shalani could come and talk to TSO about that. If, if it isn't going to be referred to TSO, if it's just going to be, "Tell the town manager to do this," I agree with the idea that in comparison to our other problems and challenges, I'm sorry, I always try and say challenges instead of problems, with our institutions of higher learning, this is not the highest priority. This is not what I would assign him to do, and I would vote against telling him directly to do this. I would vote for putting into TSO and putting it into the larger context of TSO having these conversations with the town manager and reporting back to the town council.
Kathy?
Nice.
Okay. As you know, I was on this committee. I am going to agree that I do not think this, given the list of things I'd like to see in a town-gown relationship, I wouldn't make this number one. So, I think it should go to TSO rather than the town manager. And I'm just wondering, the wording, I don't think I saw this before Lynn, or I missed it, whether it, this literally says, "Develop this," to assess this, to assess strengthening the town gown. I think TSO should be focusing on that. I think it's, we need to see where this might go with the university, because some of the thoughts about working with the professors that Meg and others have explored is that professors may be able to get outside grants that could jumpstart this. So, this is not working with the chancellor, you know, at that high level. It's down at the few professors, and it did start in this way in other towns, know that the town is, that there's a body, and it could actually start with some outside funding rather than just taxpayer funding. So, it's, it's worded right now that says this would be a high-level town gown. And that doesn't, the notion of a relationship on some of this, I think, should, Alyssa's right on, it's not, a counselor's not speaking for the council, but certainly seeding an idea and the germ of an idea, and if there's some people want to run with it, then bringing it back makes a lot of sense.
So, before we go any further, let me try, if we're going to keep this, okay?
Yeah.
Let me try the following, per Charter, Section 10.11, "To refer to TSO to explore the development of a town-gown working partnership on participatory budgeting as outlined in the Participatory Budgeting Commission Report on June 1, 2021." So, basically, it would put it in an exploration mode, not in a must-do mode.
That, that to me addresses what I was raising, Lynn. Thanks.
So, I'm going to make that as a motion. Kathy, do you want to second it?
Kathy, are you?
I would second.
I do.
George seconded it. Okay. Shalani and George, do you have comments?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I was going to say, I support this being part of the town gown, because it just gives another opportunity to, even for the public, to see the different ways that the, that UMass does work with the town. And it just creates a way for the, for UMass to formalize that it doesn't always have to be about money, but it's through these different ways in which they can be supporting the town. And I just want to also clarify that what I was talking about was part of the CRC initiative to engage the community, because we were hearing a lot from people about the community not being engaged, and I took that on personally as part of the CRC initiative initially to reach out and find out resources that we have, and we did end up finding, and now the town manager is working with them. And at some point, we hope to create a prototype, which will land at TSO at some point, to formalize and to take it on. But I'm in favor of supporting that it be included in.
Been made, and now seconded says, per Charter, Section 10.11, "To refer to TSO to develop a town gown," no, I'm sorry, "to explore the development of a town-gown working partnership on participatory budgeting as outlined in the report of June 1, 2021." That may, that's been, Darcy?
Meg has had her hand up. I just, I'm wondering if you could take her.
I didn't see her hand up. I'm very sorry, Meg. Go ahead.
Just to clarify from something Mandy Jo said, we haven't made any initial contacts yet because we had to have this conversation. So, we're extremely aware that this is delicate. The second quick point is that the funding that's available is private philanthropy that doesn't, isn't in any, that we can work, will, through conversations, work out, but it's not funding that would be in any way available to the university or to Amherst other than for a program like this related to, you know, expanding democratic participation in municipal settings. There's millions of dollars out there for this. And so, we need to not have a kind of, it's a, it's not a blunt instrument, like we need, our relationship with UMass is going to have only one thing going on. We can have multiple, multiple relationships, but I do also believe that we have to communicate with each other. And I would never go out to the university in any way to represent the town, heavens, if we hadn't had this conversation. You know, we have to all work together on this, but these are not necessarily competing interests. The fact that UMass need to bring in grant money.
I, I think the main thing is that the way, what we, what the motion does is now rest this within a committee, Meg, that you would then work with in that exploration.
Great.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions about the motion? Again, it is to refer to TSO to explore the development of a town-gown working partnership on participatory government. All right, seeing no more questions, I'm going to begin the vote. Uh, Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer? Yes. Mandy Jo?
No.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Yes.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalani Balmill?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Okay, so it is, this vote on that was 12 in favor, none, and one opposed, no abstentions, no absence. Before we go on to the next one, I just want to explain. So, I read this recommendation, and then I immediately went to the town manager's goals, because I said, gee, this sounds like something we've already said. But when I was reading the town manager's goals, what I realized is that our goal around community participation briefly mentions residents, and immediately then goes on to talk about relationships with higher ed institutions. And it may be that in a previous version of goals, we had something different. And so, rather than try to deal with this tonight in any kind of way, I wrote the following motion with Mandy Jo's assistance, and also, and it was to "Per Charter, Section 10.11, to refer to GOL for inclusion in future town manager goals regarding community participation in annual program review and status report by the Community Participation Officers, CPOs, to the town council as outlined in the Participatory Budget Commission Report of June 1, 2021." That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there comments or questions at this time? George?
Yeah, a couple things. First, just a question, what program means?
Uh huh.
Annual Program Review. I'm just curious what that refers to. Um, and then a comment. So, maybe the question first, and then my comment.
So, to me, the Annual Program Review means of the CPOs. But I think.
I guess then that relates to my comment, which is I'm uncomfortable telling the town manager how to utilize his staff. I, I can see the point of having him provide a report, but who he decides to give the report, whoever he decides to have do the report is up to him. So, I have a concern about specifying a particular group of individuals on staff to provide a report. He's much better equipped to judge their workload and who can do what and when. So, I would, my thought is not to have them identified, but rather simply to "refer to GOL for inclusion in the future town manager goals regarding community participation in annual program review and status report." Would be my two cents.
To the town council.
Ah, to the town council, yes. But I would not vote for or support us telling him who is going to do the reporting.
George, as the person who made the initial motion, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. Darcy?
Um, I don't have my hand up, but I am.
You seconded it.
I, um, could you just explain that again, George? What, how you would change the motion?
Well, as it currently stands, Darcy, we're basically telling the town manager that he's supposed to direct certain specific staff members to furnish us with a report. Um, and I'm uncomfortable with the idea of us telling him who should be doing what. Um, I have no problem with requesting a report from him, but as to who will do it and how they'll do it, et cetera, et cetera, that seems to be up to him. So, that was my thought.
How would you change the motion then?
Well, I think we just did. We just amended it, but it would need your agreement, since you are seconded it, was to basically strike everything after status report to the town council. So, we would strike a community, community participation officers, and as outlined in, that all would be stricken.
Okay, so the motion would read, "Per Charter, Section 10.11, to refer to GOL for inclusion in future town manager goals regarding community participation in annual report, an annual program review and status report to the town council," period. Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Regarding, regarding what though? Regarding?
Following perhaps a little on what Darcy was starting to say there, I, I'd need to go back and look at the, or Meg could just answer for us, exactly what the wording is in the bulk of the PBC report rather than in that actual recommendation, because I understood, and I think that it really helped when she explained that back on the Charter Commission, right? So, she's carried this idea through all the way, is the idea was, that was one of the things the CPO would do, right? And now, we're in a very different place, because there's never been the CPO. There's been three people who already had full-time jobs that were assigned a third of a new position in addition to their already full-time jobs. And I want to point out to George, because I know he gets nervous about asking staff to do things directly, but the charter says, "The Community Participation Officer will regularly submit reports to the town manager and town council." This is not a just, "They belong to the town manager, and they don't have anything to say to the town council" kind of position. That's never been true, and I know we've often interpreted that over the last three years, but the charter wording says that they can report to the council. So, I just want to somehow, I understand him not wanting to direct it too much. I'm not real sure I'm comfortable with the way you just reworded it. But I think what we're trying to get across is that rather than saying, "Well, this just goes in the hopper of things, the Community Participation Officers should be telling us," except they're not telling us anything, because the town manager is not having them tell us anything, versus to follow up on this particular issue, right, is to make sure, it is more apart with part one. It's really more about, what did you do to make part one happen? So, I'm just getting a little confused. I understood the recommendations when they were in the report, but when I'm trying to actually practically apply them, and we're rewording motions, it's getting tricky.
So, the actual report, the recommendation is on the screen. It's C above. Annual, Annual Program Review and Status Report by the Community Participation Officer, CPO, to the town council.
Lynn, if I may?
Yes, George.
I'm looking at the full report, and the language reads, on this particular issue, "to present a status report, quote, 'on efforts by town staff to enhance and increase resident participation in budgetary matters,' end quote." And that language seems to me to capture, I believe, the intent of this motion. So, I would include that language. I still would defend the idea that it's up to the town manager to decide who will furnish that report, but it, we will request a report that would basically be a report on efforts by town staff to enhance and increase resident participation in budgetary matters.
Athena, are you able to edit the document on the screen?
No, but I can pull up what we're talking about.
Okay, could you just pull one up with, which has this, so we can see what the other motion would be? There is a motion on the table. I will withdraw the motion for the purposes of this discussion. Darcy, would you agree with that?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I, I think the motion is just fine. I think we're just saying the, as outlined in the, in the report is basically what George, the language George just quoted. Why, why not just say as outlined in the report? It, it doesn't make any sense to me. And Alyssa just reminded us that the charter requires report from those CPOs anyway. So I guess I just don't understand why we don't want to exercise our ability to get this information about community participation.
I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is whether we want it more broadly and whether we want it to refer specifically to budgeting.
Well, it already is because it says as outlined in the participatory budgeting commission's report. That's right there.
So if we stop with the word uh, report and then go to the town council as outlined in the participatory. If it says that, does that work for you?
That still means that it's a report by the CPOs, does it not?
It means the CPOs are part of that report, but there may be other efforts as well. George?
Well, yeah, as long, as long as it includes a report from the CPOs.
It would.
The report is 17 pages long. And what I've picked out, it seems to be exactly what is intended. So I guess somebody could read all 17 pages and try to finally find it. But what I'm suggesting is we put the actual language here, which is from the report, which if I'm not mistaken, is exactly what is intended. If it's not, certainly have someone speak up and say so. And I still do not want to include the CPOs because I believe that's up to Paul as to how to use his staff. But the language that I'm suggesting is taken from the report. If you just have as outlined in the PBC report, commission report of June 1, 2021, that's 17 pages of text, and then you get to pick out what it is that you think is relevant. I think we have picked out what is relevant, and that's why I'm suggesting I like.
And so George, if, is based on what you're reading, is the language? I'm sorry, I just don't have the capacity to also pull up the report. Is the language that's up here now consistent with what you're suggesting?
I just don't think it's very specific. I just, I don't really know what it means. Whereas with taking the language from section, I believe, I'm now going to scroll back up and find it. But I believe it's in section 4C. I don't know if Meg can find it or somebody can, yeah, 4C, annual program review and status report. So that the language is taken from that section that I quoted, which again is that the report is on efforts by town staff to enhance and increase resident participation in budgetary matters. That is what I understand to be the purpose of this motion. The language as it's stated does say that, but you have to go find it in the report. And as I said, it's 17 pages long. So I'm just suggesting putting the language in and I'm suggesting taking the CPOs out.
So all you're missing is in budgetary matters, Athena.
Thank you.
So you would suggest that that don't eliminate that. I'm sorry, do not eliminate that.
Right.
Okay. So after the word report?
Yep.
It, that would go right.
On efforts by town staff to enhance resident participation in budgetary matters to the town council. And then you could still include that if you wish. I don't think it's needed, but that's, I don't really care. But I do think now it actually states what I take it to be the purpose of what gives Paul a clear sense of what he's supposed to be doing and also me.
Right. I also want to mention that it is our prerogative to amend the recommendations. And while this isn't how the recommendation was stated, it actually is in the spirit of the report. So George, there was a motion on the floor. I withdrew it. Darcy, you seconded. I was trying to see if this was going to be acceptable to you.
Um, yeah. Meg, is this good with you?
Sure.
Okay, it's fine with me then.
I mean, basically we want to encourage more meaningful participation and whatever. Yeah, it's fine. I appreciate this discussion.
Okay, so the motion is the one on the screen. It's moved per charter section 1011 to refer to GOL for inclusion in future town manager goals regarding community participation and annual program review and status report on efforts by town staff to enhance resident participation in budget, budgetary matters to the town council as outlined in participatory budgeting commission report of June 1st, 2021. If the motion's been made, I'm now looking for a second.
I will second that motion, Lynn.
Are there any further discussions? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote. I'll start with Griesmer and I am an aye. Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Abstain.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalene Bell Millen?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Patty Angelus?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
So, so the vote is 12 in favor, none opposed, one abstention, no absence. Is there any further discussion at this time? If not, I'm going to thank Meg and the committee.
Could I just say one quick thing, Lynn?
Please.
Um, I thank you all very much for taking this so seriously. I want, and I appreciate your thanking us. I want to specifically name the people who were so fabulous on this commission in addition to Kathy and myself. So Kathy Shane was fabulous. Liz Larson, John McCabe, John Fenske, John Page and Holly Bowser. And this group of people worked hard. Everybody attended almost every meeting. And we come from really different perspectives about AMERST politics and different allegiances. And we worked really well together. We listened. We really, I think modeled the possibility in AMERST of people working together who come from different perspectives, even though we're all white, we're all middle class, so we're not that different. But I really encourage us to all find creative ways to work together across the artificial barriers that have been created that are, that are so destructive. But um, thank you for thanking us and for approving. And I thank you. And, and onward, we'll get out of COVID, I hope, pretty soon and we'll work on more in, I mean, people participation in AMERST so people really feel engaged, that they're listened to, that their ideas are important. That's what we want. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Meg. We really appreciate it. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Lynn, thanks for your leadership.
Oh, thank you.
Ta ta. ETFN.
Meg, you're welcome to stay. I'm just going to move you back to the attendees.
Oh, what an exciting opportunity. Ooh. Hi. No, I appreciate the long, incredible long hours that you all put in. It's sort of breathtaking. Thank you for your service.
So we're going to move on to the comprehensive housing policy. And I'm really going to turn this over to Mandy Jo and just say, Mandy Jo, as you know, we have a slide with the major five goals. At any point you want us to put that up, we'll be glad to do that. But this is coming out of the community resources committee and Mandy Jo is chair and Shalene is vice chair.
So thank you. Um, we, I'll, I'll take the slide not quite yet. I, I want to say a few things before the goals themselves go up. First, I, I want to say that the comprehensive policy, housing policy that is in front of the council right now for its first reading represents 18 plus months of work of not only the CRC. I want to thank John Horneck and the Housing Trust specifically for starting this process more than two years ago. They initially proposed an affordable housing policy. And that was a catalyst to getting us here tonight with this comprehensive housing policy. And we probably wouldn't be here without that initial catalyst from the Housing Trust to get us thinking about our role as a council as policymakers. And I also want to thank Tom Kegelman, who joined the CRC as a resident expert on housing for a number of our meetings and his expertise and what he brought to us for those discussions was invaluable. So he didn't have to take the time to do that and he did, and, and we thank him for that. As the report says, the policy itself as proposed is not the end. And it's probably not all it could be. We're not going to hide, hide from that. We could be working on this for years and never be finished, but there comes a time when a committee and a council has to recognize that the time is now to, to enact it and start moving towards implementation. And that's where we are now. If we don't have a policy, it makes it that much harder to align our funding and our projects and our bylaws to a holistic vision of what we want housing to be in AMERST and how we want to address housing. And so the policy is the first step in doing that where we can then start looking at specific actions and measures and saying, does this meet those policy goals or is there a better way? If we don't have that policy, we can't ask those questions and then act on those measures. So a unanimous CRC voted to bring this policy and recommend adoption of this particular policy to the council. The CRC believes it's time to adopt the policy and move on to implementation. It's only then that we can begin the real work of making housing more accessible to all who want to live in AMERST. And so Athena, can you put the goals up? And then I'll talk a little bit about each one. So our policy starts with five initial goals. They are to promote greater pathways to homeownership and integrated communities through increased supply of a diversity of housing types. And they are to increase the supply and variety of affordable and market rate rental housing. To create, update and maintain safe, secure and environmentally healthy housing. To address climate sustainability and resiliency of the housing stock, location and construction. And to align and leverage municipal funding and other resources to support affordable housing. So the goals attempt to address several issues. We have a lack of housing availability in this town. The demand for housing is outpacing the supply of housing and has been for a very long time. The reports and studies that have been done in the last decade state that, and we see that right now. That demand for housing that is outpacing the supply is for both students and non-students. This is not just a student demand issue. This is a non-student demand issue. It is for renters and it is for buyers. I have most recently heard that there are tenured professors in town that cannot afford to buy a house in this town. And so it's, it's a crisis we are in. And we are trying to attempt that through this, to attempt to address it through the policy. And, you know, the lack of housing, the other thing we want to address is a lack of housing diversity and housing options. We basically have two options in town. You have an apartment and you have single family homes. The single family homes might be rentals, but we don't have a lot of duplexes. We have a few. We don't have townhouses. We don't have a lot of triplexes. And, you know, we need a better diversity. We don't have a lot of senior housing that we've heard a lot of requests for. And we don't have tiny houses or cottage style houses or developments that are very diverse. And so we hope that this policy starts addressing sort of the lack of diversity of what options people have to live in. And we need our housing to be safe and secure. The fact that we have so many rentals and this, 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 that, that goal goes more towards rentals, but it's not just about rentals. But we need to ensure that where people are living are safe and that they're secure in their housing, that they're not going to get kicked out because they complained they don't have safe housing and things like that. And we need to ensure that they know what their rights are and everything. And we need our housing to address the climate change. If we're going to have any chance of meeting the climate action goals that we have as a council adopted, we have to start having a housing goal of converting all of the fossil fuel, mainly heating use, but other uses for cooking and all to electricity and then electrifying our grid. And, and we need to start leveraging our municipal resources as best as we can because we all know our municipal resources are limited, whether that be the land we have available or the funds we have available. And we have to figure out a way to leverage them to their maximum and everything. So those are the five goals. The policy sets forth objectives within each of those goals, some descriptions within each of those goals and where we think implementation or how we might implement them, the policy then goes on to measurables. John Horneck at Public Comment described most of them quite adequately. And I can answer questions about where some of those measurables came from and why we think we want that we picked those numbers. And then the, as the report says, there is a sort of implementation strategy section. And I want to emphasize yet again that that is a section that is compiling strategies we found and we heard from various reports and studies that have been done over the last decade or more from conversations we had at CRC, from conversations we had with other boards and committees when discussing this policy, from conversations and ideas that residents and fellow counselors had when we were sending this out. And it is a compilation. It is not a a vote or an acceptance of these are what we need to do. It is let's list it all out there and figure that out later. We had at one point as CRC thought about deleting it because it is extremely hard to either prioritize which ones are most important or not into a policy document or to agree on them. Because as you all know, the 13 of us have very different ideas as to which ones would be most important. And the way forward that CRC thought to move this policy forward was to list them all or delete them. And we actually heard from town staff, from boards and committees and from residents that they wanted the list in the policy because it was the, one of the first times that anyone had actually compiled a list from all of the many sources that had it. So we decided to leave it in. But it's not an endorsement of every single one of those strategies that's listed in there. They are possibilities. And the next step after adoption of this policy would be to figure out which ones need to be started on first of those implementation strategies. Every study we've done in the past decade has made it clear that we need more housing. The current housing crunch and corresponding rise in prices even shows that right now. And we need it at all income levels, not just at the affordable level, although it's probably most dire there. But we need it everywhere. And working with UMass is only part of the solution. We struggled as CRC to figure out how to put UMass into this policy. We've done it in various sections. But they are not the solution. The solution is much more comprehensive than just trying to get UMass to build more housing. And, and so we have to realize and recognize and you know, do it ourselves too, and figure out ways to build housing and create more housing diversity and affordable housing outside of what UMass can do. The policy provides a basic blueprint for where to focus staff, committee and council energy to address this housing crisis. And we hope that you will agree with CRC and its unanimous vote that the time is now to do this and that these are the five goals that we should be focusing on.
Before we go to comment, I want to make sure that people realize this is the first reading. We are not voting tonight. Dorothy?
I want to second Mandy Jo's comments about the amount of time, interaction, responding to different needs that people have brought up that have gone into this, I think 20 versions that you see before you. I also agree that we should go forward as soon as we can because we need to start looking for the new ways to get to some of our goals and that would be new ways of approaching and funding. But I'm also aware that this housing policy is kind of like, was it the, the blind men trying to describe an elephant? It depends upon what part they touched, what they see. So I would agree with John Horneck and Kathy Shane in saying there needs to be more emphasis on working with UMass and having them on their land create more housing units. on working with UMass and having them on their land create more housing units. And I note that I thought we'd had more emphasis on that in their final report, but when I skimmed it tonight, I think I saw one on page nine and four, page fourteen. There weren't that many mentions. So I, you know, would probably like to have that emphasis increased because I think it's an important part. But something that John didn't mention, which I am very excited about, look at goal number one. Okay. Promote greater pathways to homeownership and integrated communities through increased supply of a diversity of housing types. That is something I think is a great and fabulous goal. And today in today's paper, I was reading about Holyoke sending forth a big affordable housing community, which includes some large buildings with rentals and eighteen homeownership townhouses. I feel that we have, we have a housing shortage. But we need to not forget the role of homeownership for a diversity of people. And as a matter of equity, and I'm talking about affordable homeownership, if we want to have people with buy-in year round and the strength of the town. So I think that we really did include everything in here. So the question is, did we emphasize this enough or that enough? We each see some aspect which is more important and meaningful to them. And you know, can it be improved upon? Yes. But should we keep improving it before we get to work? I think at this point, maybe some minor adjustments, but I think we should, we're ready to go. I think we're ready to act. We understand the importance of this project. And that we want to create a town where people of different incomes can afford to rent and own in a variety of of mixed type housing units. And I I think this report is a very good step on that way. So thank you for your work, Mandy Jo.
May I ask that we take this down and make sure the clock is off? Okay. Thank you. Alyssa.
Thank you so much. I appreciate what an effort this was when I said to my friend John Hornick, yes, you have this big document, but where's the policy in there? And that was low so many years ago and so many people have worked so hard and so patiently on pulling this together. So I agree with you. We could work, keep working on it for the rest of our lives, but let's do something and start implementing. So I'm really happy to see this first reading. And I hope we, you know, sort anything out that we need to sort out now so that next time we can actually just go ahead. I understand that it's hard to say what voting a policy means when it talks about some of these very specific things versus accepting a report, right? We've had that conversation before. But since this is ours, I I I see it slightly differently. I I will also note that as a resident of District One, some people are going to be highly upset to see somewhere in this report that it talks about a possible university overlay district in North Amherst Center because there are residents of District One who say there are already too many students living here. We need more homeownership. We don't need any more students living here. That doesn't mean we don't consider it. And so that's why I think it's really important. The language that's been used here, I think, is very effective. It says consider it. And I think that's a conversation that needs to take place at the various permitting tables, at the various zoning bylaw development tables. And then say, is that a good idea or is it not a good idea? I think too often we say that will offend someone and so therefore we just must not even consider it. And and it's like, let's deal with the things that we know are hot button issues and and work our way through them. I think that's a really helpful approach. I really do appreciate it. And of course, we could consider it. And we could find that no one liked the idea and that is a perfectly good outcome to that kind of discussion. I also just want to make one minor note, and this is more unfortunately for the public rather than for the town council. But we received at least two emails today telling us to support a particular counselor's housing policy of a particular date. And I want to point out to the public that no particular counselor is able to communicate to the town council what their particular view on a policy is outside of a posted meeting. So nagging us to, because it's happened before, nagging us to agree with a counselor's view on a policy, a counselor's view that none of us have seen going into the meeting is extremely frustrating. And so perhaps that's where some of those folks have felt like they're not being listened to. It isn't that we don't want to listen to you. It's that we simply legally can't entertain such a thing prior to a posted meeting. We have not seen it. We are not hiding from it. We haven't had a chance to digest it. I assume we'll see it later this evening. But it's so frustrating for the public and for members of the council to know that we can't just say, oh, look at that report. Let's write a memo about what we think of it and turn in it ahead of time. Wouldn't that be super efficient? It would be super efficient. It would just be illegal. So that's why we have to go through this rather drawn out process. Thanks to everyone.
George.
So this is an extraordinary gift to us and thanks are definitely owed to CRC, to its chair and to all its members. We have five goals that I think I hope all of us can in broad principle support. And I certainly would like to hear from my colleagues if there are goals there that they do not support. So we need to talk about that. But they've also given us, as Mandy pointed out, a list. They they decided they were thinking of prioritizing it and then they thought, no, that's not going to work. But they did eventually give us a list. So we have a really rich and and very diverse list. And so my question is a simple one. Where does this go? Dorothy says we're ready to go. Okay. It sounds like she thinks these five goals are 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 strong. I agree with her on that. So where does it go? I don't see any way this can be effective unless some kind of entity, some kind of working group, task force, call it what you will. But some kind of housing task force that involves the council is created. This is just a bunch of, you know, just a bunch of nice ideas and a long list of stuff. So my question to my colleagues and to myself is, well, where do we then send this? Where does it go? Where does it live? Because it just lives out there in the ozone. Nothing's going to happen.
Right. Mandy Jo, I'm gonna, I'm gonna collect a few questions and then come back to you in the committee to see if there's additional comments. Okay. Andy.
Well, thank you. I also want to thank CRC for doing a really magnificent piece of work to move us forward in a discussion that's been out there for a while. Earlier this afternoon, I asked Athena to put back into the packet for this meeting something that really is dated January a year ago, twenty twenty about the Finance Committee discussion of the Affordable Housing Trust recommendation for a policy. And we looked at various financial aspects of it. Submitted a report, but in the end felt that it was a housing policy and that the housing policy needed to come from CRC. So the Finance Committee did not go further. But there were several things in there that I think that are worth reminding everybody about. Which is why I had it put in so that people would have a chance to look at it for the second reading. Couple of examples of that is that there's the question of what we called numerical goals and are referred to in the report as measurables. And I think that there was the concern that was discussed in the Finance Committee report is that if you have numerical goals or measurables and they drive the policy alone, that it runs into problems that the numerical goals lose sight of the cost of building a single unit or the consequences. And that we should be looking a little, a little bit more than just at setting quotas for we want to build so many units in such, in a certain period of time. Because we may be lured into either more expensive or less desirable and product, housing product if we're driven by goals. So that was one example. We talked a lot about the cost of individual units. Because as we looked at all of the affordable units that have been built over time, they vary tremendously in the cost per unit. And that was a lot of our focus. And the the cost per unit needs to be measured carefully and needs to be looked at as we go forward. But I think that that is something that is a future question. And it's not a question of reservation about the policy. It's just to, it is unless to the extent that is a point that needs to be looked at in the policy. Just saying that it's something that ought to be considered. Because a tremendous amount of staff time can be required to develop a project. And if we don't look at the staff time, then there's a problem. That there's a huge cost that is not being recognized. And we also have to recognize that what staff spend on that is not available to spend on other, other goals. And so those are the kinds of examples. The other things that I had thought about as I was looking through the report is that this is more than a affordable housing policy as Mandy indicated. This is a housing policy altogether. And it's looking for a range of housing. I, we do need to consider how much housing Amherst can sustain and how and and still be the community that our residents who are currently here and invested in the community wanted to be. And the problem cannot be solved by Amherst. That's a national problem, statewide problem, a regional problem. Can't be on the backs of one town. We need to do our part. We need to think about the people who are here. But I, it would be a mistake to not recognize that at some point across forty thousand population, how big does this community really want to see envisioned itself? And which kind of then brings me to sort of a couple of concluding points. One being that we also need to recognize that as we grow housing and change the nature of housing, that we're going to have service costs that whether they be for public education or public safety or community services, that we have to pay for those services. And that had, that needs to be very carefully considered as we move forward to enlarge the housing opportunities that we want to make available in the Amherst. And the the last thing is is that this is a huge policy and the list is already kind of referred to the amount of community interest that's already come about. I think we really need to make sure that we have an opportunity for healthy community discussion. So.
Thank you, Andy. And I just want to note that I, I did allow both two previous speakers to go over time because of this being our first opportunity to look at this. Kathy? Please unmute. Kathy, please unmute.
I am. I had to get to the button. I did write it actually quite long paper and I sent it into Lynn and I apologized that it somehow got out before it got to the council. I totally agree with what Alyssa said. And my understanding is it will be placed at everybody's packet tonight. Is what I, I appreciate all the work that went into this and I think it is so much improved from what I saw a while ago. And I believe I sent extensive comments in at that point and I decided I'm not a member of the this committee, even though there are only five members, so there was never an opportunity to be. So I haven't been able to follow each draft as it went along. I was waiting for something I thought was more final. So I have, I I lay, I tried to lay out my concerns in a constructive way by providing some examples and ways to improve the paper. So I I think it's a good start and the five goals. I'm, my main concerns about the five goals is not the wording that you just put up on the sheet. But when you look underneath them, some of the discussion, there's a lot of overlap. And it becomes less clear than actually the simple wording that we just saw. And I think affordable, if anything, I would move it up. But I want to just try to, Lynn nicely said that see, see how quickly I can do this. But highlight some of the things that are in my paper and I would like to have as robust a discussion before we make this a final paper. So Andy talked about outreach to the community. I'd like some outreach to the counselors. I'm going to start with UMass. I gathered statistics since that's my tendency to look at exactly how much has UMass grown. And since two thousand, it was a twenty-one thousand person campus. It's now a thirty-one thousand. And I put a table in the paper. And there's been no growth of beds on campus during that period that I could find. And indeed, more recently, North Village has first been closed in half. And now it's closed all the way. So there is some plan to add back some beds, but the net is now lower. And what this has meant, and we were just called recently to yet another street, those houses Mandy's talking about that the tenure professor can't find, they used to be there. They're just the LLCs who are buying them up are deep pockets and they can rent it out on a per bed, put a lot of students in a very modest house. And sometimes people don't even know the house is on the market. It's off the market before it goes on the market because it's been purchased. And we've got tipping points in neighborhoods. So that overflow of ten thousand or so more students without beds on campus is part of our housing crisis. And I just want it highlighted a lot more. With the pressure, one of the strategies being legislative pressure, not just at the UMass level, but legislative pressure to build on campus to house more. They are well below, they were at fifty percent. They're down to forty percent of people can actually find. There used to be a policy that freshmen have to live on campus. So I think UMass is an elephant in the room here because it's a big reason you can't find those small modest homes. They're being gobbled up. And rightfully so. There's a rental market. There's a market for this. The other thing I think we need to look realistically at what Amherst is, you know, how much land do we have that's buildable? And there are some reasons for our zoning, the way it is. If you look up where I live, some of the land that looks like one house on a big property, it's wet. It's really wet. Or the butts of farmland, which is, you can't build a lot. And so it's not, it's not that, and there's not a lot of land left. We have about twenty-three percent of our acreage that's residential. If you count farms that haven't converted yet to be something else that aren't permanently protected, you might get up as much as thirty percent. We don't have a lot of land. So there's a land scarcity that we can't just wish away. So I just want to reality check, because we're not a barrier in some places is less that the zoning law is stopping something from happening and the scarcity of where to build. So we, we would, all of us like, would like some small new co-housing diversity. If you look around for pieces of land to buy it on, to build it on without knocking down existing houses, it's, it's difficult. Secondly, it's throughout this, there's a very good emphasis on walkable streets, sidewalks, transit. The paper is actually silent on those policies. So you have extensive lists. But sidewalks are expensive, road, bikeways are expensive. We don't have sidewalks. We have narrow streets that can accommodate a lot of density if you want people walking. So I think it needs more on that. So I I've given comments on the goals. And then last, the policy list. Mandy, I do agree that lists are important. But these often get extremely detailed. And I think for the council to say, here is a list without parsing it down is dangerous because it implies endorsement, even if we don't mean it. So I'd rather go to a higher level and I've suggested some ways of grouping them. Not to just, a lot of it could be read as change our zoning law, allow more to be built everywhere or deregulate, but be very careful with the wording and provide some examples. I also think there are policies on the housing safety and we should be more explicit on that. I think we have some houses that are rentals that verge on slum housing, to use a of term I don't like to use. We, we do have a decent law on the books. We could make it tougher. So where we're very detailed on some things, we're not as much. So what I tried to do, and I think I've got a fourteen page paper and I didn't mean to. So what I tried to do, and I think I've got a fourteen-page paper and I didn't mean to, would give some tables, um some data on density. Um I heard one counselor at one point say Northampton's denser than we are. We are much denser than Northampton. Particularly if you take the property that's our conservation land and permanently protected farmland out of where you can build. We are dense and on all the density tables, Amherst is already quite dense. So where do where do we want to focus which kinds of things? So I I just would like a little bit more analysis and really carefully looking at some of the sentences before this becomes an official council paper. So it needs more work, but it's not, it's so much better than the draft I saw at the beginning. So I do thank you. And I know I've gone over. My paper is long and I was thinking, can I keep this to three minutes? So I'm over and I'm going to end there. And I'm offering this really in a spirit of trying to be constructive and identify places where I could be stronger or where I think there's some conflict in the wording in the current document. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, um thanks Kathy. Uh and let me just mention that we don't distribute as part of packets individual counselor comments prior to meetings. Uh we only distribute them afterwards. And the counselor themselves are also asked not to distribute them prior to meetings. Um Darcy.
Um yeah, thank you. I I really appreciate the amount of work that must have gone into creating this new version of a housing policy. Um I I don't really understand why we would not be able to share Kathy's memo right now so the public can take a look at it during the meeting. Um I don't understand what would be the reason for a policy not to do that.
The pub- the public will certainly have an opportunity to look at it. We have no public comment tonight uh on this on this particular thing. We'll find an opportunity for public comment at other times.
Right. I'm just saying, what would be the reason for not sharing it right now for people who are watching the meeting?
We can share it as it is reasonable for the person who is taking minutes doing technology and trying to put things out.
Yes, I do get that.
Alyssa, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'm not.
I know Darcy's not done. In in regards to that thing, I will talk later.
Okay, thank you. Darcy, go ahead.
Uh I'm I am uh I asked that her memo be shared and I would um uh endorse her points in general. Kathy's points, that is. Um I'm concerned um that though the policy lists a lo- a lot of good ideas. Um it seems to simply, um it seems to be a means of endorsing and bolstering the current zoning proposals, which it doesn't feel quite right and doesn't feel like it should be the basis for creating a long-term housing policy document. Uh and also I feel like the omission in the policy of goals regarding our relationship to UMass on housing is the most serious problem with the policy. And I do also feel like it's the elephant in the room. I I would like to see UMass using its land to house students. Uh and I um do agree with the the proposal to require freshmen, maybe even sophomores to live on campus in dorms or complexes that they would want to live in. Um so create a an uh you know, a uh livable environment so that students would want to live there. And as Susannah Musprat's letter to the council today stated, uh one of the unwanted side effects of UMass's shortage of on-campus housing has been that out-of-town investors buy up homes in various neighborhoods that might otherwise serve as starter homes or housing for lower-income individuals and turn them into absentee owner student rentals. Until this problem is directly addressed, it will not be possible to make much of a dent in the goal of providing affordable worker and family housing for year-round residents. And as Kathy said, Amherst can't build its way out of the affordability problem. So and on the issue of climate action, um most of the climate goals are quite laudable to the extent they allow for smaller, more dense housing and inclusionary zoning. They're great. Net-zero housing is suggested for new multifamily developments. Great, um but incentives also need to be provided for all new affordable housing construction to be constructed to net-zero standards if we're going to put a dent in the climate crisis. And as in Ithaca, New York, we need to find ways to incentivize retrofitting existing affordable housing in order to replace fossil fuel systems with electric heat pumps. Um I also am uncomfortable that the document implies that all of the bullet points in that section were somehow included in the new climate action plan, which they were not. Um the climate action plan doesn't include endorsement of the specific zoning changes or a forty-yard zoning or a student overlay districts. Um and to be sustainable, we would want to analyze our existing housing and whether we're losing affordable housing to investors buying up our neighborhoods. How can we get the majority of that housing back so that it can be used to house low and moderate income families? It's not sustainable to build new affordable housing when it's just going to be gobbled up by investors who then rent to students, which I have said twice now. So um thank you. That's all I have for now. I'm 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 comfortable right now with this policy as it's currently written.
Thanks, Darcy. Alyssa.
I know I spoke a long time earlier, so I only want to speak to the concern about sharing the report of an individual counselor. I I know this is perhaps difficult to understand, but we share documents that express an opinion on a matter within our jurisdiction during a meeting when we're acting on it during that meeting. So think of when we do uh the town manager evaluations, right? We can't send those out ahead of time to each other. That would be super efficient, but we can't. We have to do it during a meeting and then we're working on it during that meeting. We're not working on an individual counselor's proposal during this meeting. It's information that was presented, unfortunately not as it like this as might have been preferred, but is being presented tonight, just as we're all presenting individual things that are not necessarily associated with any written documents. It doesn't make any sense at all to give a document to the public that town counselors don't have. And if you say, I'm putting it in the town council packet right now while we're talking, that means Alyssa's reading it instead of listening to Darcy talk. And that's not okay. So you don't put the document in the packet during the meeting unless you're expecting counselors to take time, as we have occasionally done, and said, okay, we need a reading period to read this document. If you're not going to do that, it makes zero sense to put it out to the public instead of letting the counselor see it first. There's just no logic to that whatsoever. And again, we can't do it ahead of time because we're constru- we're constrained by open meeting law. It's not appropriate to be gathering support for your proposal during a town council meeting when none of us can be reading it during that town council meeting because you know, we're actually doing the town council business during the meeting.
Steve Schreiber.
Um yeah, so we're winging it a little bit. So I haven't seen Kathy's report, but there there um was a statement that's been now said twice, which is not fact. So UMass actually does require first-year students to live on campus with some exceptions. And if your home address is within a certain distance or there's some exceptions to that, but that currently is a requirement of UMass. UMass can speak for itself, by the way. What's changed is that UMass require, used to require, have that same requirement for first first and second-year students. So basically, half of the undergraduates. That changed ten years ago. So that is a big change and it's a big change that should be looked at and to my knowledge, you know, I wasn't in that was a change that just happened and it really is a sign of what UMass can do. So the other thing is, people keep saying that um, I mean, I'm my distinguished counselors keep saying um that the, you know, UMass should be building housing on the campus over there. But we all have, there was something that I think it came out in Paul's an email from Paul, but the campus has has reached into town. So Paul sent us an email that fact that UMass had bought two parcels of land that used to be former fraternities along East Pleasant Street. So I went and looked at that map. So now UMass is actually a continuous strip of land starting at basically Fearing, then going all the way onto the main campus. So before the so-called Gateway Parcel, that was an isolated, that was an isolated parcel. But now UMass basically is all the way into town. So what they're going to do with that land that's basically in the, on the edges of the central business district, I have no idea. But it's not something over there that the UMass can be building. It's something, you know, right smack in the middle of you you know, of town. But so so the other thing I keep thinking of is so, you know, I've lived in Amherst sixteen years and I've heard this discussion sixteen years that UMass should be building more housing. But in a way, that's a little bit like saying that it it isn't, it isn't. It's like saying that how they should build more housing or Sonderland should build more housing and that's where the problem will be solved. Because we don't have authority over UMass. What we have authority over is the town or or what we have influence is the town. And if there are carrots and there are sticks that we can do to address these very real concerns that everyone has mentioned, you know, to address maybe a mismatch in housing where you know, what kind of, you know, we're speculating what kind is what kind of housing um students might want. None of us are currently full-time students, so we can't really speak for the students. But I I would, I do agree that there sometimes feels like there's a mismatch. But what we can do is we can, we can my opinion is what we should be doing is focusing on that part where we have authority and not that part where we don't have authority, like telling UMass what they should be doing. Because as Kathy pointed out, that hasn't really worked. But it would work if, I mean, actually, there's a housing shortage right now. We have a ton of students that cannot find housing anywhere near Amherst. And so we actually are at a crisis point in terms of enrollment. But it's those kinds of crisis points that do wake up our largest employer. So that's my two cents. Thank you so much.
There are other comments. So I'm going to uh just uh exercise my responsibility as a counselor and just say first of all to CRC and to the Housing Trust. Uh I want to just thank you for the enormous amount of work that went into this uh this proposed policy. Uh it is daunting. Uh it's a lot to absorb. Um I did not write a fourteen-page uh piece on this. Um and um but I also want to reflect on and start where George left off by asking, well, what, where does it go now? And then the next question I want to add to that is, and what does the motion from the council look like? Is it at the goal level? Is it the goal and objective level? Is it at the strategy level? And I start thinking about that. And then the third thing that I want to hear from counselors about is and how do we engage the public in a larger discussion about this as we move forward? But not in a manner that it becomes, I'm sorry to say this, another parking study. Because that's not what we ever intended. This is something the council was talked about even before John Hornick came forward with his proposal. This was in our first discussions of our goals as a council to ha- three years ago, well, almost three years ago now, to have a comprehensive housing policy. And so we're sitting with a document that has taken a lot of people a lot of time to think about. And as we move forward, I ask those questions. Where does it go? What do we vote? How do we engage the public? Steve, you have your hand up still? I think it was left up, so I'm going to go to Mandy Jo.
So to try and answer a few of the questions and concerns that have been raised, um CRC did not draft this for this policy to sit on a shelf. That was always part of our conversation as we wanted used. It's why CRC had discussions with the chairs of, I think it's seven committees. The Community Preservation Act Committee, the CDBG Committee, the ZBA, the Planning Board, the Amherst Affordable Housing Trust, ECAC. That's six. I think there was one more. Um because we wanted their opinions because they were the committees we could identify that would have to deal with the policy that we would be adopting and setting. And and we got a lot of great questions from them about, well, what do we do with this? What's the intention about this? How would we implement this? Um it's why I focused on the fact that we're not done with the simple adoption of this policy. And it could have, we could have worked on this for many years trying to figure out who would deal with what individual section or letting out, letting specific strategies and identifying who would talk about that one first and all. It could have been another couple of years. And so where does it go after this? It it probably goes back to CRC to manage. Not that that is chair, I I want to say that necessarily, but um you know, it's the council's policy, so the council has to find a way to implement it. Um but that requires letting the other committees know, hey, this policy's been adopted. Um and and once it's adopted, use it as your structure and your guide as you're making your decisions, as you're making your recommendations, as you're looking at um proposals that come to the ZBA. Does it fit within the policy or not? As as CPA has housing proposals on their thing, does this work with the policy? And so it sits with not just CRC, but CRC I think would take sort of one of the leads in making sure that from the council point of view, the policy is at the forefront of council actions. Um what does the motion look like? It's to adopt the comprehensive housing policy as either amended or presented. That's the basic motion. That's the whole document we presented, not the report. That's why the report didn't discuss what was in the policy. The policy speaks for itself. The CRC has asked and recommended unanimously that the council adopt the policy as a whole. Um Andy is absolutely right. We need to consider how much housing Amherst can sustain and still be the community our residents want. That is a um double-edged sword, I would say. It is a problem that pulls in twenty different directions. Because if we don't build housing, we don't get families in town. If we can't address either through UMass or not, getting students into the housing they want and getting families into other housing, we won't have students in town. Uh elementary students and middle school students, our schools, our regional schools will continue to decline in enrollment. Um we have heard that we don't, that our residents don't want that, but that is probably a direct result of our housing crisis. Um you know, our affordability problem that people can't afford to move here um on one income or two is probably a direct result of our housing crisis. If we want more affordable housing, we have to find a way to address that. Or we can decide as a community that we're going to be a community that can't that certain incomes just can't live in. That's, th- those are all pulling at the same ball, if you want to call it that. And and we don't have answers necessarily to that, but that is exactly what we're trying to address with this and um if if we want to remain a community that can house people who want to live here, that can be affordable housing, the result of that might be growing our residential, our population. If we don't want to grow our population, maybe we have to accept that we're not going to have as much affordable housing as we would like. Where our schools will be smaller than people than they were twenty years ago at their peak. And they're all competing interests and I think that's what we as a town council were elected to figure out, um and it's not easy. And the UMass, you know, Darcy had indicated that she thought we had admitted UMass relationship from the policy. It's there. It's um embedded in it. There are strategies that attempt to address it, including um listing more town gown committees. Um but it But it, it is something that we recognized is much more of a conversation than a, we can tell the university what to do, which is why it's not in there as a goal of make the university build more housing. Because as Steve eloquently said, we, we don't have that right. That's, that's what they, they decide. We can talk to them. And we can encourage and we can create the resources and the, the committees and the conversations that are necessary to mutually benefit both institutions, our government and our residents, as well as the university. And so the policy talks about having the conversations and the need to have those conversations and the need to address student housing. It's how we address it that is not explicit, because it will require a multi-pronged approach, including seeking cooperation from UMass, but also probably building housing off campus. And so I, it's not omitted. It's in there. It might not be in there as people want it in there. I think that answers some of the questions that can be answered right away. Kathy talked about denser in North Hampton. I think it depends on what you're considering as dense. Whether it's on a per person, per square mile basis, or whether it's on how many houses can be built per acre. And I believe North Hampton actually has much denser zoning allowances than Amherst does, even if Amherst has more people per square mile. And so I think it, it just depends on what you're looking at as to whether, how you calculate who is denser. That's it for now.
I want to do a time check with people and make sure that people who haven't spoken have an opportunity to. Steve, you still have your hand up. Did you want it to be up? Thank you. Dorothy, another comment?
Then I just want to say, I'm going to have to leave, so I don't want people to think I just turned my video off, but I'm, I didn't think I could join the meeting at all, but thank you very much. And I'm just hoping that this is the beginning of our conversation about this, rather than the next. And thank, thank you all. I, I'm signing off. Sorry.
Okay. The minutes will note that Kathy left the meeting at 8:25. Dorothy?
Well, I'm going to answer the question, what next? And my suggestion is, and you know, that's why we have meetings. I have these ideas in the middle of meetings, not before the meetings. I have them in the middle of the meeting. Which is that we need to hire a staff person that would work with variety of people, but certainly work with CRC. And to see about getting federal and state money. The housing I spoke of in Holyoke is being funded from some of the new federal money. And we have, in terms of, we have a big shortage of land. So as Chris Brestrop has said many times, there's one alternative is redevelopment. And that is a possibility. We, we just need somebody to be, to be able to focus full-time on getting money from state and federal governments and finding out what's possible. And we could also think about taking Amherst College up on the land they were going to lease us for DPW, which was decided was not suitable for DPW because of the home surrounding it, and using that for some major housing development. So that is my thought. We need to work with our elected representatives, and we need to do this. And I, I don't think we can just put it on our existing town staff. But our elected representatives might be able to find the money to hire the staff person. And the staff person's end job would be to find other money. So I, I think that we could do something like that to get a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other counselors who have not spoken who would like to say anything at this time? Shalene?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that this is a policy which sets the priorities for the towns. That's the first step. And I think if we can agree with that, we want to create more homeownership with, to reduce some of the racial inequities and class inequities in our town, or you know, some of the goals, broad goals that we've highlighted based on what we've heard as a town, what our values are. And that's where, that's the starting point. So we can focus on accepting that. And then comes the next step of which goal do we start working on? And there might be multiple ones we work on simultaneously, as Dorothy pointed out. I think when Charlie Baker was here at the Mill District, he talked about at the state level, the, they have a goal of funding homeownership to reduce racial inequities. So we need to be looking at how do we capitalize on that right now? And talking to some of the developers, which I've mentioned earlier, locally, there are people, the local developers who want to. It's not a money, big money-making game for people to build small, tiny homes and, but there are local developers because they believe in this town and they want to invest, that we could engage them and start working, see if we can get the fundings from the state and with using the different innovative tax laws that we have locally, create affordable homeownership. So I think that's something we all agree with, and that could be a natural starting point as a focal thing, along with a couple of other things. I just want to say one other thing. We keep saying that UMass, and I think it's already been said, stated, we don't have much say over what UMass should do, and that's why we're focusing on what we can do as a town. And secondly, if we, if we don't do anything with regard to housing students, then it's just the way the demand and supply works. We don't have any control over local homeowners who are retiring or moving away or downsizing, and they sell their homes to builders who then converted into student housing. So one way or the other, we have to deal, and we could be more thoughtful about where we can have some student housing, which is higher rise buildings, where we could have more housing, where they're closer to university. So it reduces the transportation so that they're not coming from Sunderland or whatnot, but that they live close to the university. It reduces our impact on the environment. It takes, it brings in more revenue, property taxes, which can be diverted to reducing property taxes for other people. It, it just, we have to be more thoughtful, but we cannot keep pushing it at UMass, because we really don't have any control. So that's all for now.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, I've been debating whether I wanted to say anything. First of all, I truly appreciate the work that's been done. And, and proud of you, all of you on CRC and the Housing Trust and the other committees that have put this together. So please hear that. I, I do, and I support many of the ways of increasing density, encouraging people to live in Amherst, both renters and owners. I, you know, I, I support the accessory accessory unit and tiny houses. I support duplexes and triplexes. So please hear that. But I am concerned. I feel like we keep tying density to affordability. If we just make it dense enough, it'll be affordable. And I think that's an unsubstantiated or an unsupported assumption. So how do we look at? We're assuming, I'm trying to figure out how to say this without being insulting. Yes, I believe that local developers, like Shalene was saying, care about Amherst. But we're not always talking about local developers. So how do we address real affordability and a range and variety of affordability with, in a, in a system that values money over people? And how do we really look at that and make decisions and challenge things to address? Address that. So it's an overall flaw in our society, and so therefore in the report. But I, I truly thank you for the work.
Thanks, Pat. Are there any other comments? Shalene?
Yeah, I, I don't think we necessar, I mean, ideally, we could say that the more housing we have, the more demand, the more supply there is, it reduces the demand and therefore the pricing will come down. But that may not necessarily play out in the short run. And so I don't think that's what we are proposing, but I think what we're saying is that in certain areas, let's continue with the housing for students as a separate thing, because it's increasing our property taxes. And instead of UMass buying over town land and taking that away from her property taxes, which we're losing, let us use some of the areas around UMass to build student housing there and get property taxes from that. And meanwhile, let's engage some of our local developers with the land they have to focus on the small housing and building diversity of housing. So they're two separate things. We're not saying that one will lead to the other. I hope that clarifies.
Okay. Darcy?
Yeah, I guess I would just say that a lot of people have expressed the view that we have no control over what UMass does. And to some extent, that's true. But we do have control over zoning. And we, we could conceivably have housing policies that, where we had zoning that helped control family neighborhoods and protected them from at least too much investor buy-ups of housing. So, you know, I would like to see some zoning provisions that would prevent my neighborhood, for example, Orchard Valley, from having any higher percentage of houses being bought up for rental to students than currently exist, with, which is, you know, maybe about 10% right now. So we do have the ability to do that. And so I'm just saying that it is not the case that we have no control.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Alyssa?
I would just say, we do, it's true, we have that control. We made choices decades ago, long before I lived here, to not allow apartments in various parts of town. So we artificially created the problem that we have now. We are reaping what we sow. We said, no more apartments in many parts of town. We said, protect all this buildable land for conservation and agriculture. We made this problem ourselves. So to blame the university for choices that we made because we wanted our community to work to look a certain way is not reasonable. And so yes, there, there are definitely opportunities to work with them on things, and we have done that. And that's why we've had some good conversations, although, you know, perhaps not ideal, but good conversations around the rebuilding of Lincoln and North Village. But remember, if we're talking about doing protective things, we already did those things. We prevented ourselves from building apartments. That's why all those people, all those students live in Sunderland and Belcher Towns, because we wouldn't build them. We put a lot of stuff into conservation. That didn't happen by magic. We made a choice as to what we want our community to look like. Now we see where we're at as we're hitting the 40,000. And as Andy says, we're going to have to make some decisions as to who we are moving forward. We've already said in the past, we don't want that many students living here. Period. We are reevaluating that now.
Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call a break. We will reconvene at 8:45. Please mute and put, turn your video off. When you come back, turn your video back on. Shalene Bellmell?
Here.
Alyssa Brewer?
Present.
Pat DeAngelis?
Present.
Darcy Demont?
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Trahanicky?
Present.
Dorothy Pam?
Present.
George, Evan Ross?
Present.
George Ryan?
Present.
Kathy Shane?
Kathy left the meeting.
I'm sorry, she left the meeting. Steve Schreiber?
Here.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
And Sarah Schwartz?
Present.
Okay. As we heard earlier today, the DA Districting Advisory Board is barely able to meet their quorum. And so George became aware of another candidate late in the week and has gone ahead and had that person put together a their qualifications. And so I'm going to turn the meeting over to George. This is under the topics, not reasonably anticipated 14, but I'm taking it out of order because of the action item. Okay? George?
Thank you, Lynn. As you all know, and if you've heard already this evening, we voted a while back to fill seven of the nine seats in the DAB. We could not fill the remaining two seats, because there were no applicants from District Four and only one from District Five. And so what we agreed upon tentatively was that if any applicants came forward from either District Four or District Five, GOL would review them and send them on to the council. And as you heard this evening already, DAB has been meeting, but they've been having a challenge, meeting quorum. And also with the workload, given that they don't have a full body present. And so they have been asking for help. So while I was on vacation, as you would expect, a CAF came in. And when I got back from vacation, I reached out to the individual and asked if, they were from District Four. I asked if they were still interested. They said yes. This was on Friday. I said, would you please submit an SOI? And they did, and that was on Saturday. In the meantime, I reached out to my GOL members and said to them that this is what I'm thinking of doing, and please let me know if you have a problem. And what I'm suggesting is that we bypass the usual GOL approval process and bring the candidate directly to you, the council, and see if you're willing to approve this person and add them to the DAB. So in the packet, you have the candidate CAF, which you already have, actually, his SOI, and also I added his SOI for the ZBA, because you actually have seen and voted on this candidate just a few months ago. And I thought that also might be useful background for you to see. The candidate is a 40-year-plus resident of the town. He's a small business owner. He's currently serving, as I just said, on the ZBA as a full member. He had served as an associate member. He has also served on town meeting and chaired the Cherry Hill Advisory Committee. He's been active in the community at large. And as I said, he's already been vetted by you for one body, and he has expressed his desire to assist the DAB. And so what I'm asking you to consider, of course, his other prime attribute is that he's from District Four. So what I'm asking you, actually, I'm begging you, to consider approving Craig Meadows to serve on the DAB for a term to expire June 30, 2022.
And on your screen, you'll see two motions that we've done in preparation for this. And I just want to ask if there's any questions. Then George, I'm going to have you go ahead and make, oh, I'm sorry. Evan, please.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry. Do we have to suspend 8.4?
Interestingly enough, we debated this today. I'm not sure Athena thought we needed to. We put it on there.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Because we, we specifically-
For other appointments, right. If there's no objection, I'm going to just go ahead and not, not do the first motion. Is there any objection to that? Okay, then we're going to go to the second motion, to appoint Craig Meadows, District Four, to the District Dean Advisory Board, effective immediately for the term to expire June 30, 2022. Is there a second?
Second, Hanaky.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, then I'm going to begin with Griesmer, and it's a yes. Hanaky?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan? Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalene Bellmell?
Yes.
Yes.
Alyssa?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Darcy?
Yes.
It's twelve in favor, none opposed, uh, one, no abstentions, and one absence. Okay, we are now going on to the discussion and a decision about our future meetings, because we, the last motion and vote we took was to continue remotely through the end of August and our next meeting on the thirteenth of September. Uh, we need to decide how we are going to proceed. I updated the memo. It's in your packet. Uh, not a whole lot has changed since then. So if we could take this down, I would like to go ahead and invite questions or discussion. Mandy Jo?
Uh, could I ask a question before I discuss? Are we discussing both potential motions or just the first one?
Um, I think we should go ahead and discuss both. Go ahead.
Because I had a question with both. Um, so my question regarding both motions is what is our end game? I know the last time we voted this, I was vehemently opposed to continuing remote meetings. Um, given the Delta variant at this point and the new CDC guidance, I am slightly less opposed at this time. But I am really concerned about where we're going. Uh, because I still feel it's extremely important that we meet in person. Um, COVID is something we're going to have to live with forever. Um, we're going to have to figure out a way to meet while COVID's there. Masks are probably going to be normal. Um, and I still feel that meeting in person is essential to governing well. If we hadn't had the personal relationships we developed through in-person meetings the first year and a half of our term, I don't think we would have been able to govern as well as we have the second half. Um, so I, I don't know where we go from here, and that's one thing I haven't heard from either the fellow counselors or our manager about all of this, is what is, when can we expect to be meeting in person again, even if it requires masks? Um, the other question I had is why is it only the Finance Committee that can be accommodated with hybrid? Um, especially since right now, the Finance Committee doesn't even have meetings, because most of their work is done, so they're not meeting regularly. Yet CRC has been meeting and holding public hearings, and there's been no discussion about, um, switching any of that hybrid capability from one committee to another based on, um, which is doing, and I hate to quantify it this way, but the more important work at that time of year. And so I, I am a bit frustrated that Finance keeps getting, um, preferred over the other council committees, when it's not the time of year that Finance seems to be the, um, doing the work that is most interested, that the public might be most interested in at this point.
Okay, Mandy Jo, I'm going to try to address the first one and then, uh, but Paul may want to add, and then I'll have him address the second one. Uh, the first one is, the way we wrote the motion, we actually threw in a date. It's open. We could do this month by month. I'm perfectly fine. We just need to remember to do it so that we know how we're meeting the next time. And we need to do it in time to be able to post agendas. So I just have to keep figuring out when um, we need to make, take the next vote. Um, I totally agree. I would love to be back in a room with everybody. Mask off. No COVID. It just doesn't happen so far. Paul?
Yeah, so on the first point, um, we have, I have said that we are in in-person, and for, for our employees, I've said we are an in-person operation. We want people in the building doing the work that needs to be done. Uh, with that being said, we also recognize that we're in a competitive environment and that we are, have some people who will be able to work remotely, and we are developing, um, rules for how people can accommodate that. But in essence, I believe that the townspeople expect us to be at our, at our, in our building, doing the work. Um, for committees, when we look at it for the town committees, at this point in time, we don't control what the virus is doing. Uh, we feel that, as you noted, the Delta variant is, um, is very contagious, and we don't think it's according with our, working with the Health Director, not wise to bring people into rooms together. And we try to minimize that as much as possible, even among staff meetings. We try to minimize that, or meet in very large rooms. Um, so, and we are looking at this in terms of a bite at a time. Uh, you know, we, we looked previously to get to Labor Day. You know, we'll probably stay remote until, um, Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day and keep looking at it a piece at a time and watch what happens. We don't have, we learn not to have specific metrics that we're tying it to, because that doesn't always work out well. Um, but I think it's, it's, you know, um, for, for the town committees, we'll be staying remote for the time being. Um, for the council, uh, um, and other elected bodies, we will support you in any way that you decide. Uh, we have the resources, we'll make sure we have the resources to do that. Finance Committee has always been called out separately, because that was in the Amherst Media contract, that they had, they were required to broadcast their meetings under the Amherst Media contract. Um, and that's why that's always been sort of in a different, um, different, and it's also mentioned in the, in the charter. Uh, so that's why that's always been a little bit different. If there are other committees that, um, you would like us to try to support, we would look for, to develop the resources to do that, um, to support you.
And this would be to support the mixed mode of in-person hybrid?
Yeah, yes.
Right, okay. Dorothy, I'm sorry, Mandy Jo, does that answer your questions? I mean, to the extent that we can.
Probably to the extent that it can be.
Right, right. I mean, I just, I just looked at my calendar. Um, we could vote to only do this through September, and then on September twenty-seventh, we would take a vote one way or the other regarding October, and that's perfectly fine. Uh, Dorothy?
Um, I agree and disagree with what Mandy Jo said. I understand the importance of in-person teaching. I am going to be returning to the classroom. However, I'm very unhappy that I will have to wear a mask, which I will have to wear, because I use my face in teaching. So I'll have to do it all with my body, but I am theatrically trained, so I will do that. Okay. Now, let's think of the town council and the public watching us. I think the worst thing would be to have us, watch us in a hybrid meeting where we're sitting masked at the dais. I, I really think that is bad. However, to acknowledge Mandy Jo's statement that we need in-person interaction to operate, uh, well, I think that we, as a council, can have, uh, retreats again. You know, in a big enough space, socially distanced, interact. And of course, we know that the public can come, so if they want to, but we have found in the past, they tend not to really crowd to our retreats. Okay? So I, I'm really, I did not enjoy our in-person meeting masked for four hours. Um, I, I just think that it just does, it's too clunky with some people in the room, and there were too many people in the room. Uh, when the public came, I felt, um, nervous, having that many people sitting so close together in the town room. We at least were spread out a little bit. So it was just ringing bells, alarm bells, all through my head. So I feel, I've heard from so many people, that they prefer to be able to participate remotely. As we're doing now, although this has its problems, um, we are learning how to do it. Um, I think the public has a better sense of access in a safer way to town business this way for this time. But I do agree that I think that the town council should meet in person. Uh, and I'm suggesting for retreats, we have so many things to talk about. We have not, we didn't go, we didn't go to Boston. We didn't go to the MMA. We haven't done this. We haven't done that. You know, I think that we could find a way to do that, that would be, um, safe for us. And if at that retreat, there are one or two town counselors who feel that they cannot participate in that, they can participate remotely, because people have their reasons, okay? For whether they feel, where they feel safe and, and under what conditions. So that's my two cents.
George?
I really feel strongly about this, but I have a feeling I'm going to be in a very distinct minority. Um, our business is very much involves the human connection. The business that we do as a council with their teams, and it has suffered, I think, from, um, the last, uh, year and a half or less of the fact that we have been largely existing in hyperspace, or whatever you want to call it. So I believe we should meet in a hybrid fashion, um, and that we need to, uh, be together. And I understand there are risks, but, uh, at the moment, um, the, the guidance is masks inside. That's it. So that's, I think, what we should do.
Steve?
Yeah, so since we're all showing our hands, so I think one of the best calls ever is the fact that we went back to all remote. Actually, and two, two really good calls requiring masks inside town hall. And then, uh, us going back to, you know, you to remote. And you, you know, thank you all for those, and the town manager and staff for those decisions. But, um, you know, I, I think Dorothy, Councilor Pam really hit on a lot of things that I was thinking about, that the, like, this kind of a discussion here, like, right now, discussing this issue, I find it a hundred percent, I mean, I find it very effective now, because I can look all of you in the eyes. All of you that have your cameras on, in the eyes. I cannot do that in the town room. Um, but I really do miss what everyone else has been describing are the informal discussions, like going up the stairs in town hall, or, you know, during a break. And of course, we can't discuss business, but we can get to know each other. So I, I think, Councilor Pam really hit on the head what, um, I hadn't thought of the retreat, but if we could figure out ways of doing sort of smaller bite get-togethers amongst us, so that we can get to know each other, but then continue for safety reasons with Zoom meetings. That's my preference.
Um, given this discussion, let me start by, uh, making a motion. Uh, the one on your sheet gives the options of in-person hybrid or remote. And it states a date of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I'm going to make a motion that says we stay remote, but only through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And at that time, we look at this again. Alyssa?
I was hoping you wouldn't make that motion. I was hoping you'd make the motion on the sheet.
Okay. Any other comments at this time? Evan?
I was going to let you make the motion and just, and, and then I was going to comment during discussion, but I can also just make it now, since you called my name. Um, which is when we, when we voted on what to do back in June, I abstained from that vote. Um, much to some people's surprise, since I rarely abstain. Um, and the reason I did so at that time was because I really didn't care what we did. I was open to whatever the majority wanted, um, even though I feel we are a more effective body when we meet in person, even if we can't see everyone in the eyes. Um, I think that we, I definitely work better when we're in person. But I also felt like, um, the, the state of emergency ended quicker than we expected it to. All of a sudden, the governor was just like, yeah, all right, we're done with this. And many people had planned their summers expecting that we would be remote over the summer, and so I was pretty open to the idea that we should continue remote. I, I'm not quite there anymore, because now the summer is over, and we are looking at, having known the emergency, uh, state of emergency is moving many of us thought we probably would return to in-person in the fall, and so I assumed we've been planning accordingly. And I'm having trouble reconciling the fact that in about a week and a half, I'm going to be in person in a classroom, um, with twenty students in a room that's capacity is twenty-five. They didn't give me a bigger classroom. It's the exact same number of students I've always taught, and the exact same classroom I've already, always taught. And I'm having trouble reconcile why me and, and Steve and Dorothy can go back to teaching full classrooms in person, but this body can't continue to meet in person. Um, especially given our vaccination status, even with Delta. And so I'm actually ready to return to in-person. And so I, since we're showing our cards, I wanted to show mine, that I, I'm no longer agnostic about this. I'm ready to go back to in-person meetings.
Any other comments at this time? Okay, so I'm going to make the following motion to continue all town. I'm sorry, Dor, I'm Dorothy, I didn't see your hand.
I, I, you know, in-person, twenty people, twenty-five people in that small room, that is not correct. That is not right. Okay? HCC maximum fifteen students in the room is twice the size of what we normally teach in. So I'm sorry that UMass is doing that to you, Evan, but I think that that's wrong, and I think you should object. So that's my comment there.
Okay. Are there any other comments on the issue before the council? Um, then I'm going to make the motion to continue all town council meetings. I should say all regular town council meetings, or all meetings of the town council in the remote meeting format until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a second?
Shalene, second.
Okay. Any further comment? Then I'm going to start with, um, Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
No.
I think that was a no. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, George Ryan?
No.
Kathy Shane is not here. Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
No.
And that was a no?
Correct.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalene Bell Mill?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer was going to abstain, but I'm going to have to break a tie, probably. Mandy Jo?
No.
I would prefer to abstain, because I would prefer to go with the, um, wish of the council. Um, and that's what I did last time, and so that is consistent. That leaves the vote to be six for, for the remote, five against, one abstention, and one absence. So I believe that means the motion passes, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and the second motion is to authorize each council committee to decide how they will meet either in person, and I think we want to make this in-person slash hybrid based on what the town manager has now set. Or remote until October, well, let's do this one consistent, until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So the motion would read to authorize each council committee to decide how they will might meet either in-person slash hybrid or remote until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a second? You made, Mandy Jo, you're.
Second, DeAngelis.
Okay, thank you, Mandy Jo.
Does this mean the committees couldn't decide to do just in person, that it would have to be hybrid?
Oh, I'm sorry. It does, it, the committee gets to decide either in-person slash hybrid or remote.
But, no, but with the slash there, aren't you just giving us two options with this motion? A hybrid in-person format or a remote format? I'm, I, I truly don't understand.
Okay, Mandy Jo, I was going back to your, your question earlier about why was it that hybrid wasn't offered to all the committees besides just Finance? And the town manager then spoke and said, if a committee wants hybrid. But I guess what you're saying is you would like the motion to read as either in-person, in-person slash hybrid, or remote.
That's my question, is if it doesn't read that, could a committee still decide to do just in person? That's my question is if it doesn't read that, could a committee still decide to do just in-person? Or are you, by making this motion of in-person slash hybrid or remote, eliminating the possibility for an in-person only meeting?
Let me make the motion, and then if somebody wants to amend it, they can, okay? To authorize each council committee to decide how they will meet either in-person, in-person slash hybrid, or remote until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Okay, Dan, Pat, you had originally seconded it. You're still okay? Okay. Now, questions. Alyssa?
The reason the motion was, as Lynn was just explaining, I'm gonna try and say it another way. The reason the motion was written differently than the previous motion is because up until the town manager said tonight on live camera, we believed that our only choices for town council committees were in-person, of course, meaning in-person with masks because there's a mask order, there's no such thing as an unmasked retreat, in-person with masks or remote. We believed that hy- in-person slash hybrid, which was possible for the town council and the finance committee, was not possible for committees like Mandy Jo mentioned CRC. That's why it was written that way. Now that he has told us live that he can change that, I object to the idea of in-person being a choice at all. Because in, as by itself, because in-person masked means that families with immune compromised people, families who have to drive a distance to get to town, families who have jobs, suddenly have to start showing up in a town building with a mask on to wait their turn to participate in a meeting as opposed to the wonderful hybrid option that we've been offering people. I am completely offended that we would consider that this is exactly like the town council going back to purely in-person meetings. If you think that in-person meetings amongst yourselves with masks on is more important than incorporating public input, and hey, if public wants to come, if public wants to have input, well, they just better get their butts to town hall. I'm just utterly offended by that choice. And so realistically, it was no choice. It really wasn't a choice until the town manager outfit that option. I believe it should say in-person slash hybrid or remote. We are in as far, the hill I will die on is we are never going back to purely in-person meetings. That's just offensive.
So are you making a motion to amend the motion?
I believe it should read the way the first one did, in-person slash hybrid, given what we learned tonight, in-person slash hybrid or remote.
I'd second that.
Okay, the, this, the amendment's been made and seconded. Um, we're going to vote on the amendment and then based on that, we'll go back to the original motion. So the motion, the way, the amendment, the way it now reads is to authorize each council committee to decide how they will meet either per, in-person slash hybrid or remote until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Any further discussion? Mandy Jo?
I would like to hear from Paul if he thinks he could staff all of those meetings with that and also what it would look like from a chair's point of view. Cause only Lynn has even chaired one hybrid meeting, so. And, and there was a lot of staff there, so I would like to hear what that would look like from Lynn's point of view and from the town's point of view for four different committees if they all decided to do hybrid.
First of all, Mandy Jo, I want to thank you for asking for my opinion on this because I have one, okay? It is very difficult to run a hybrid meeting. Having said that, when we return to town hall, I am totally committed to having hybrid meetings and will do everything I can during my term as president to make them work well, but they're difficult and they require a lot of staffing. They require a technology person, because we all saw what happened at the magical hour of midnight when Sean had to rescue us. And we, they also require the note taker. So I, one of the considerations is whether or not the note taker could be, could be remote. And I also believe that, and I've expressed this to Paul, that if we have a policy, and we do, where any counselor can be remote for as many meetings as they need to, that when we have staff who come to meetings, they can also be remote. I don't feel that we need to make all staff come in and sit in town hall for three hours until their turn comes up. Um, so I personally, uh, it, while it is a more difficult meeting to manage, and it means you're spending more time managing the meeting than participating, I still embrace it because of the ability of the public to attend in remote meetings. So that's where I'm coming from. Paul, I think we were asked about the staffing issue.
No, the, the staffing is intense. We have one room, which is the town room that can accommodate this. So there cannot be two meetings happening at the same time if they're hybrid meetings. Um, basically what a hybrid meeting is Zoom, a Zoom meeting just like this with people happening to be in the same room. When you're in the same room, we have to funnel the, the sound through the, the town room sound system. Otherwise, you get all kinds of feedback as if, as you know, when you're in a room together. But in essence, the meeting is ju- is managed just like this, except you need someone to manage the shared camera, which is on the uh, that, that we have set up for the um, desk when someone is testifying. Otherwise, everybody will have their laptop in front of them. You'll be looking at it as if, as, as if you were like in this situation. Um, that's the way we would propose to run the meetings. That's why everybody gets to see each other and it doesn't matter um, how, how it's managed. The only, the only thing I ask is that the council committees, however you choose, if it's the chair or the committees, that you commit to a format and stick with it. We can't be jumping back and forth saying, oh, this meeting's really important. We want to do it hybrid. This one's not so important. We're not gonna do it. So I just think that once you make a decision, stick with it. We, that is gonna be a, a task to manage. I don't think it's reasonable prob- I don't know if it's possible. I'm not expecting our minutes takers to be able to do this. It will mean another staff person sitting in the room supporting your meetings, but you're the council. I'm not offering this to other committees, but I do support the council's work on this.
Right. And so this is offered to all of the four council committees that we have at this time?
Standing committees, yes.
And the standing committees. Mandy Jo, did that answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay. And let me just say, it's not a council, it's not the committee chair, it's the council committee that makes the decision. According to the motion, the way it is. So the motion has been made, it's been amendment amended. The amendment that's on the table now is to have the motion read to authorize each council committee to decide how they will meet either in-person slash remote, I'm sorry, in-person slash hybrid or remote until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The motion's been, the amendment's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Alyssa?
The only question I have is I know that sometimes we've to schedule things out ahead of time and CRC is probably the best example of that. Maybe because they've had so many hearings, it's not an issue for them, but TSO might be looking at having a hearing, although we're hoping to hope that in September, so it would be covered in this time period. So I'm just trying to make sure, you know, because you have to plan for hearings so far ahead of time, that if there are any hearings that would need to be in October, that then we don't have an answer as to what's happening with October. So maybe it's a non-issue. I don't know.
If we think it is an issue, then we can bring this back up again on the thirteenth of September. Cause that would give us plenty of time for the October ones. Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification, uh, in the, the way we did it last time was that the chair would make a decision on the first meeting. And then afterwards, uh, it would be whatever the committee decides. Uh, I don't know how else we could do that, but Paul had indicated that you would like to see consistency throughout. I think that first meeting, we can't be consistent.
Yeah, we did do it that way before. Thank you, Andy, for that reminder. Shalini? And we also have some meetings that are scheduled this week and they have to be done the way they are posted because they can't be changed. Um, Shalini?
Uh, I, I just feel like everyone is being stretched in very difficult ways during this time. And I just want to acknowledge the town staff that is also under a lot of stress. And so if I, my recommendation would be that if we can till September thirtieth, just keep it online. And, and that way it would take off some pressure from the town staff and give them some time to gear up because in the future I do, what we've heard is people do want hybrid. But let's give the town staff that notice that this is where we're moving towards perhaps. And so they can, you know, mobilize their um, that, yeah, the required help or whatever, but I would
Let me just do a quick check. There's no finance committee meeting scheduled at this time. The next one that's going to be scheduled is, I don't know. Uh, Mandy Jo's is CRC is meeting this week. And do you have hearings scheduled?
There are no hearings, no additional hearings scheduled at this time.
Okay. And uh, TSO is meeting on Thursday night and that is virtual, I believe?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then um, GOL is meeting on Wednesday morning and that is virtual?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so I just wanted to do a quick check. Mandy Jo?
Uh, Lynn?
Yeah, Andy.
And up, she said that, uh, I haven't had a chance to consult with the committee yet, so that's why sort of in this weird position on what to say about future finance committee meetings. But there is a reason that the finance committee may need to schedule some September meetings. Uh, whether the committee would feel that they're important to do in person is a different question and that I can't predict.
Okay. And so what we're saying is you as chair would then um, decide on the first meeting?
I guess I would have to, um, but I talked to Sean about this and uh, I just need to get some notice out to the committee to explain wh- uh, why we would need to meet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mandy Jo, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, I, I don't know whether it's, I, I will oppose the removal, the amendment to remove in-person only because of I, I almost feel like removing that option while I agree it's important to have uh, the residents be able to make public comment from a room other than the town room, if that's where the committee is. Um, I fear the workload that a hybrid meeting would require additional staff to do and therefore with the removal of in-person from this motion, I really believe that it's a choice without a choice because the committees, I think, I think a lot of people are hesitant to put even more workload on the staff. Um, I, I am curious whether there has been any exploration as to a way to allow public to, I, I think most of what we like about the hybrid beyond the live broadcast of a meeting is the fact that the public can comment without showing up in the meeting room. And so has there been any exploration of the ability to allow that to happen? Even if every single committee member is in a meeting room by providing a call-in number or something that would alleviate um, the entire requirement for all of the extra staff members and all. Um, and if that hasn't been looked at, could that be investigated or looked at in time by um, the end of September or something to give us what I would actually believe is a more sustainable hybrid option than what is being proposed right now? And, and then I, I'm also concerned about doing these on a month-by-month basis because that takes committee time, it takes council time for all of these debates yet again. Um, and we're trying to get, I, I'd rather spend committee time not talking about meeting format, talking about actual substantive matters.
Okay, Alyssa?
I object to what, to repeating what seemed like a good idea in the past, but wasn't a good idea. And now we're repeating it, which is the idea that the chair would make the decision on the first meeting. There's zero reason to do that. This is a housekeeping matter. It can be easily ascertained among the members, if you don't have a meeting this week, what, which most of you do, but if you don't, like finance committee does, to discuss which meeting format can be done as a housekeeping matter. It is outrageous to me that we are putting that in the hands of one individual and then saying, but that's okay. We can make everybody jump through that hoop and then we can decide to do something different the next time. It was a mistake when we did it the previous time. We should not be doing it this time. People should be making those decisions ahead of time. And I certainly do appreciate not wanting to belabor the time at meetings like I'm doing right now to have this discussion, which is why I was hoping we were making the decision through October, not through the end of September. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? Okay, the amendment is on the table. The amendment is to authorize each council committee to decide how they will meet either in-person slash hybrid or remote until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
So point of order?
Yes.
Just because it was a practice last time that we let the chair decide, this motion doesn't say that. This motion says the committee decides. That does not mean, and the committee concedes to let the chair choose the first time. So either the motion needs to be revised to say the chair chooses the first time, or we need to say the committee decides, like it says now.
Okay, so um, Andy, you were the one, I believe, that only, you're the only one without a scheduled committee meetings. Do you have any problem polling your committee as to which one? Mandy Jo, you seem very
It, the amendment that we're gonna be voting on is just to remove the words in-person from the list of the original motion, right?
Right. But the, it, the last time I asked the chair to make the decision about the first meeting because we were rapidly moving that way and people needed to get the meetings scheduled. And I think Andy has gone back to that original decision. The reality is that um, the three committees that are meeting this week, whether it be under the forty-eight hour rule or not, can make a decision about how they're going to meet in September. Finance is the only one that's affected by this, this point. And I heard Andy suggest he would consult the committee.
Yeah, I, I have no problem consulting the committee, as Alyssa suggests. I, and when I raised it, I raised it as a question, not advocating a position, but just to make sure that we were clear about what, what we were doing. And the uh, group clarity is that uh, we will do it with an in-person meeting. Finance can do polling uh, with, uh, since it's a housekeeping matter.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Then I'm going to start with um, Evan Ross. We're voting on the amendment to
Uh, no.
George Ryan?
Hi.
Kathy Shane is not here. Steve Schreiber?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Hi.
Shalini Bumel?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis?
Hi.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is an I. Mandy Jo Hanke?
No.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
So it is um, eleven voted, no, I'm sorry, ten voted yes, two voted no. Uh, no abstentions and one absence. So the motion passes. And we will revisit this if not on September thirteenth, on September twenty
That was just the amendment. We have to vote the actual motion.
Okay. All right, the vote, the motion then is to authorize each council committee to decide how they will meet either in-person, hybrid slash, slash hybrid or remote until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Ready to vote?
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes.
If this motion fails, does it go to the chairs? Who does it go to? Just, I'm curious.
Alyssa, your thought?
I don't think we have a definitive answer. I think Mandy Jo would agree with me. We don't have a definitive answer. Her preferred answer might be that it would go to the chairs. I would think that the preferred default would be what the town council is doing. Since they're town council committees, but I hope we can come up with a decision on this particular thing. But if we don't, then I would think it's what the council is doing. I don't have any idea why we would leap to letting chairs decide. That's like saying we'd let chairs decide to meet on a Monday at seven AM, even though none of, they didn't actually think their counselors could be there at seven AM. I mean, it's a group decision.
I'm going to suggest we go ahead with the motion and if it fails, we'll come up with a different motion. Okay. Rather than sitting here debating what would happen, if it didn't happen. Uh, to authorize each council committee to decide how they will meet either in-person slash hybrid or remote until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, George Ryan?
Hi.
Steve Schreiber?
Hi.
Andy Steinberg?
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz?
Hi.
Shalini Balman?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Hi.
Patty Angelus?
Hi.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an I. Mandy Jo Hanneke?
Hi.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Hi.
Is twelve in favor, no, uh, no opposition, no abstentions and one absent. Okay, we are going on to, we've already done appointments. Uh, we're going on to, uh, committee and liaison reports. Um, Mandy Jo, CRC, anything further?
CRC meets tomorrow to discuss, um, recommendations. They will, it will deliberate and discuss recommendations and on mixed-use building revision, bylaw revisions. Um, then move on to parking, then move on to apartments if there is time.
Okay. Um, elementary school building, Kathy is not here, but Steve, you are.
I'm here and I can, uh, we were supposed to meet this morning and review the applications for the request for services for, for the architect in the team. But because of a glitch with the advertising, that has been delayed. The, so the basically the deadline has been extended until early September. And we've also been taken off the designer selection board agenda. That was supposed to be September, October, September for the shortlist, October for the interviews and that's also been delayed until November, was it? Is it November? And, and for.
Paul?
Paul's trying to. He's, I'm trying to read his lips. Yes, he's agreeing, yep. So it's been delayed a couple of months, which is, it is what it is.
So it, in essence, it means two months delay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, finance committee, Andy?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, um, G O L, George?
Uh, no report. Uh, we meet on Wednesday. Um, that's it.
T S O, I think that's going to be George, since you've been chairing.
The vice chair is here. Um, Evan, you want to run with it?
Evan?
George has been our interim chair for the last two meetings, so I'll let him handle this.
All right, thank you, Evan. Um, T S O meets on Thursday. We will be hearing from the Amherst College uh, folks on the way finding science, um, and deciding what our next steps will be. And, uh, we, uh, you have the report, obviously it's in the packet, you've seen that.
And George, I want to thank you for stepping in, um, and for the, uh, committee to proceed on Thursday. Assuming you have a five-person committee meeting, I will attend at six, six-thirty. And we will hold.
Yeah, it's been changed to five-thirty. Thank you. I just, uh, Evan, I believe that is correct. Am I right?
Yes, as of like three hours ago.
Okay, I will attend at five-thirty. Thank you for telling me that. And I will run the election for Chair and Vice Chair, okay? Um, next is, uh, any liaison reports and I believe, Pat, you might have had one.
No, I'm, no, I don't right now.
Okay, Alyssa?
I want to just briefly to T S O, wanted to thank George for filling in when, when Darcy wasn't able to lead us anymore. I'm not convinced that we're having five people show up at T S O on five-thirty. Um, so I'm not convinced we're having an election on Thursday. In fact, I can guarantee you that at this point, we're probably not going to have all five people there because I'm not sure I'm not going to be there. Um, and I don't know why we would need to have an election when we have a vice chair who can serve or as we were so able and taken care of by George. And not have all the members there. So I guess I'll defer to Darcy as to whether or not she was planning to show up for that and planning that she would be part of an election. But I didn't believe she was going to be available on Thursday. Then my other point is completely separate, associated with T S O. We had previously had a question from another council committee as to what we were doing associated with outreach. And yes, there are many things we might be doing associated with that, but one thing that we noticed when we were working on appointments is there are still a lot of vacant seats on committees that are appointed by the town manager as well as I believe we have a, an upcoming opening up on Z B A for associate because somebody was holding over. But then, and so that'll be a CRC thing, right? It won't be a T S O thing. But in terms of T S O outreach, since really all we have are the town manager appointments, there are at least thirty-two vacancies in town bodies right now. So there's a lot out there. So as you're going around talking to people and having your district meetings, et cetera, please remind people that there are things to apply for so that we can fill those all up and have that done before the next council comes along.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just going to go back then, um, Evan, you're chairing on Thursday night? Then I will not be there. Okay, I'll be at my son's concert, weather permitting. Um, okay, um, are there any other liaison, are there any liaison reports? We've approved the minutes. We're going to the town manager's report and he provided us with an update. So Paul, any highlights at this point?
Sure, so I just want to commend our staff. We, we dodged a bullet on the, uh, Hurricane Henry. Uh, we had extra staff from the fire police and DPW ready to go if it had taken a different turn. So, uh, thank you to our staff who are available and for Dave Zomack, who was the, uh, temporary town manager, acting town manager at that point. And he was on it, um, and had with a high level of communication. So, um, in terms of, um, tomorrow, uh, we are having the ribbon cutting for Kendrick, the new Kendrick Park playground. So members of the council are invited to attend. It will be a relatively simple, um, event. But it's an important thing for our community to acknowledge that this is our second playground that we have, um, cut the ribbon on. So we're really excited about having another important thing for our families and our community to, to take advantage of. Um, in terms of COVID, um, you know, this is, we're getting ready for the reopening of the university and the colleges. Uh, this weekend will be very busy. You'll see signs around with redirecting traffic. Town staff have been working with, uh, and the police department have been working with the university. It's pretty much set up as it has in the past. Um, this year we will, um, also be having the community fair happening on the town common. Um, and so there will be extra traffic and, but the weather looks good. It's not going to be raining, so that's all, all good news. Uh, and I think I summarized and you've gotten some, uh, information from the university. They are at about ninety-eight percent of their domestic undergrad and graduate students are fully vaccinated. Ninety-three percent of the faculty and staff are fully vaccinated. Um, they have relocated their community testing, um, which I took advantage of today from the Mullin Center to the campus center. And you can go there and get tested in, like it's always been, or they will give you a little baggie and you can go in and test yourself on your own and then drop the baggie or the, the vial off in one of their three collection points. And then they will give you the results back. I went and got tested at noon time today. I got my results about, um, an hour and a half ago. So, uh, really, they have a terrific turnaround time. So if you want to get a test on whether, you know, if you've been traveling, which is what I always do. Um, so it's worth getting the test. Um, in terms of, you know, on the agenda, there's also an update on the litigation with, on the Jones Library. So, uh, with the court and, you know, I've shared the, the decision with you and there was an article in the paper. The court has denied the plaintiff's motion for preliminary injunction. So this is the second judge in this court that has ruled in the town's favor on this case. Um, but this, and one of the reasons that the judge made the decision that he made was that the town council has taken the action to place the question on the ballot, um, which, um, sort of offset what the, with, with the plaintiffs were requesting. So now where we are is that we go, uh, go back to the original tracking order, which, um, from June, July sixth, twenty twenty-one. So we're back to where we were back in July sixth, twenty twenty-one. And we'll be working through that two-year process for the court case unless, um, the judge or another judge throws out the, um, things that are standing out, you know, that are still out there. So I can't, that's sort of, I don't want to get into too much speculation on that based, I just want to give you what is out there.
Okay, well, are there other updates, Paul?
Um. No, that's it.
Okay, are there questions at the town manager? Evan?
Yeah, so I was just curious, uh, so since we last met, the Board of Health imposed an indoor mask mandate, which seems consistent with what other communities are doing. Um, thinking more about COVID and, and dealing with Delta. Uh, so I spent the past weekend in Manhattan and went to, uh, well, I won't say how many bars I went to while I was there. Um, and every single one asked for proof of vaccination to get in. Um, prior to that, I was in Provincetown for a weekend. Every single bar I went to asked for a vac, proof of vaccination to get in. The hotel I stayed at required proof of vaccination to get in. We see New York City is, is requiring that for bars, restaurants, gyms. We see the same thing in San Francisco. I'm wondering if there have been any discussions in the health department or within the Board of Health um, of exploring ways to, uh, for places like bars, restaurants, gyms, mandate proof of vaccination for entry.
So I'm not aware that the Board of Health has had that conversation. Um, that is the next step after the mask mandate. So mask mandate is the most important thing. Because even if you are vaccinated, you can still, um, receive and convey the, the Delta variant. So the mask. Yes, the mask mandate is the most important thing and that's what they're focused on right now.
Okay, Dorothy?
I want to bring up a point about the age and dementia-friendly community. And I want to remind the town manager that part of being an age and dementia-friendly community is having walkable sidewalks. Um, one thing that many people do when they are in early stages of dementia is they're told, get out there and walk. So it's not that they go home and sit in, they go out and walk. And right now, I had somebody say to me, the one thing I asked of you when you got elected, the one thing, and you haven't done it, and it was about the unwalkable sidewalks in District Three. So I, I know that we're doing so many good things. I know that roads are being built and things are being surfaced. But I'm just saying, please, can you fix the sidewalks? Thank you.
Shalini?
Yeah, I was wondering about, um, the, the initiative that Mary Beth was leading with respect to the alternative, the press program and who would be leading that. And I had another question about the African Heritage Reparations Assembly. How long are we inviting applications? I'm spreading awareness about that. Like what should I tell people by when they can, they should apply?
Um, so the implementation team includes the fire chief, the police chief, Jennifer Moisten from my office, plus the co-chairs of the Community Safety Working Group. Um, so they are continuing the work. Uh, we, I have met with the, the co-chairs of the Community Safety Working Group. And we talked about the need for some, another person to take the role that Mary Beth had taken as a facilitator. Um, and we have discussed some names of people and so I've reached out to a couple of people uh, who might be able to take on a role that could, because it, it really takes someone. We, we can't ask volunteers or existing staff to take on this leadership role. And it's not really leadership roles, more facilitation roles. So, um, we are looking at different options for that. Um, and that's something we'll probably, a consultant or somebody that we'll have to hire to help with that process. Um, for African Heritage Reparations Assembly, we have a committee, uh, that includes, um, Barbara Love. Um, Keisha Dennis from the Residents Advisory Committee, Sid Ferreira, um, and, uh, Jennifer Moisten, and they are meeting this week with the candidates who have put in their names. Um, unfortunately, uh, they're meeting with most of them tomorrow night. But, um, they are a couple of candidates that couldn't meet, so they're meeting with them Thursday night. So I won't be able to give you, give the council names until after Thursday night, which I was hoping you could get to T S O before then. Um, so that's, they, they have a number of candidates that they're, they're meeting. And so I really appreciate, uh, Barbara Love's leadership and Sid, Sid Ferreira, uh, stepping in as well.
Okay, so we all said then we don't need more applicants for that?
We have more than enough applicants.
Oh, okay, great.
Applicants are always welcome.
Okay, um, and just two other things. I just want to thank you all for making the zoning, uh, website or webpage for all the zoning changes happening because a lot of people were asking for that. And if we could maybe just add the dates when the different meetings are going to happen. I know Mandy Jo has created graciously all the dates when, which meeting is happening when. And we, if we could just add that to the zoning page, that would be awesome. And I know the chamber has created the greater amherst, uh, dot com website, which I think we all should also publicize because it is such a great website to let people know what um, places to go hiking or restaurants or whatever. And it's such a great website to promote everything we want to promote about our town. So maybe, I don't know, are we highlighting that on our website anywhere, maybe?
I don't think we have, but we can.
Yeah, I think it'll be cool because many people still don't know about that website.
Okay, great. Any other, thanks, Shalini. Any other questions at this time? Okay, then, uh, we're going to go on to town council comments. I did send you a report, uh, the president's report. I did not, I have not done a future agenda items. I'm working on it by trying to get information from various chairs. Um, and I wondered if you have any questions about the president's report? It's just absolutely scintillating. Um, and then the other thing is that based on the vote of two weeks or three weeks ago, I will be sending out an email to see if there is a counselor who would like to fill the, um, position on the Energy Climate Action Committee, uh, between now and the very beginning of January. Other than that, I'm looking for any other counselor comments. I've seen none. Uh, we've taken up four. We have no executive session. And unless I see a quick hand, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at nine fifty-two.